We'll call the meeting to order. And we'll start with the salute to the flag.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can take roll call whenever you're ready, please.
Ivor Scabdal.
Here.
Noah Levy.
Here.
Thomas Mulder.
Here.
Peggy is absent. Sarah West.
Here.
Jerome Curriozzi.
Here.
And Lorna McFarland is absent. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Director Ford, do we have any agenda modifications this evening?
We have no modifications. There is a packet supplemental on your dais this evening, but all of that has already been emailed to you.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we take public comment on non-agenda items. So if anybody would like to address the commission on matters that are under our purview but not on this evening's agenda, now's the time to do so. Please approach the podium if you're in the room. And if you're online, please press star nine to raise your hand. And if you are online, you want to speak, I'll come to you after those were finished, those in the room have finished. And sir, you have three minutes.
Good evening. I was last here on September 4th during the Ridgefield Events modification, and I believe some of you were here, but I have some comments that I would like to make as a follow-up kind of informational. One was I remember that during the U-Haul conversation, the cost of an appeal came up. I was the party who represented the Fickle Hill residents who appealed to the Board of Supervisors. And I just wanted to let you know that the figure $1,500 was used. And so I wanted to let you know that the cost right now is $3,200 for an appeal, so that if that's a point of discussion in the future, you've got it there. The second thing I wanted to mention was something where I'm glad that we appealed for one reason. During the appeal, when we got the public notification, I noticed there was a typo in it that said that the venue had been allowed up to 40 events. And as I recalled, they were allowed 30 events. And so I quickly, the night before the appeal, I went through the document download and I saw on the agenda, that in the agenda, it also, under the item title, it said that they had been allowed to increase to 40 events, whereas, as I recalled, it was 30 events. So I then went back to the Board of Supervisors' resolution that they would be signing if they upheld the decision, your decision. And in the resolution, it said that you would increase to 40 events also. And so I then went back to the Your Planning Commission September 4th resolution, which had been signed by Director Ford and was listed with the names of you commissioners who were here, and it too said that you would increase the number of events to 40 events. And so the next morning, I sat there and I wondered if I'd been in some alternate reality where what you'd done at the meeting was 30 events, but now we were doing 40. So at the start of the meeting, the next morning, I talked to Director Ford and Cliff here and told them that it said 40 events, and they said, well, that's correct. And I said, no, it was 30. So Cliff and I adjourned down the hall. We quickly went through 20 minutes of the videotape. And lo and behold, at 2 hours, 38 minutes, and 40 seconds, Commissioner Mulder made his motion with 30 events. My point would be that I'm wondering how such situations maybe are avoided, where the quality control or how that works within your commission. Do you, as commissioners, when you make a motion and you second a motion, do you go back and read the motion after it's been signed by the director as the true and correct representation of the events? Do you go back and check that to see that it is? That's my point.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that in the room that would like to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, and do not see any hands raised online. Is that correct, Director Ford?
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to close a public comment on non-agenda items.
Chair, can I make a brief, can I make a brief response to public comment?
Yeah, I want to, I want to close and then have that discussion.
Okay. So I would like to make a brief response to public comment and just state, because you did bring up the appeal, and I did read the documents in the appeal, just because someone shows up here dirty doesn't mean they're unprepared.
Director Ford, did you want to?
Yeah, I can respond to that. I think that we just missed that. And Mr. Stumpf was correct when we changed that at the board, and I believe we have changed that, or I'll make sure we've changed the planning commission resolution as well.
Good. Because my recollection is it was 30, and by allowing the stayovers that were going to be essentially take three days, that would mean only one event on the weekend, and hopefully it would actually be, end up being some sort of a reduction.
Right.
Okay. And then, I'll come back to this later. Okay. Thank you. So we'll go to the consent agenda. And the consent items actually aren't numbered tonight, so, but we'll go to the consent agenda. I'll read each item that's on the consent agenda. I will check with the commissioners to see if we have any questions, any of the commissioners have any questions or comments. Also check with the public. If you do, we'll pull that item off of consent and hear it later this evening after public hearings. Okay? So the first item on consent is general plan conformance review of the McKinleville Community Services District Admin Building Expansion Project. And I'll check with the commissioners. Seeing no one has any comment in the room or online. I see no hands, so that will stay on consent. The next one is the Mimi Mine Parcel Map Subdivision in the Table Bluff area. Checking with the commissioners. Check we're all good. And in the room or online, I see no hands raised, so that will stay on consent. The next three I'm going to take together. It's the Mark Finley Special Permit in the New Harris area on assessors parcel number 218091006. And I'm taking these together because they're all interrelated. There's also Mark Finley Conditional Use Permit, assessors parcel number 218101002. And then Finnmark Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit on assessors parcel number 218091004, all in the New Harris area. Commissioners, look we're all good, and checking in the room. I see no hands. I see no hands online, so that will stay on, all three of those will stay on consent. So I bring it back to the commission, looking for a motion.
I move approval of the full consent agenda.
I have a motion.
All second.
And a second. We'll just do a voice vote on this. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. So no items were pulled from consent this evening. So we'll move to public hearing. For each item on the public hearing calendar, which there are two, we'll have a staff report. The commissioners will, if they have any questions of staff on the staff report, I will allow the commissioners to question staff. Then we'll open the public hearing. At each public hearing, the applicant will have an opportunity to speak for up to 10 minutes to present their project. Then we will have members of the public also that are interested in speaking on that project can speak for three minutes. And each, and then after, if there's any follow-up, the applicant can come back up for a closeout in the final three minutes. And when we go to public comment, I will take those in the room first, and then I will go to anybody that's online that wants to comment. So the first item for public hearing is Daniel's Coastal Development Permit, Special Permit and Variance in the Shelter Cove area. And Director Ford, I'll turn it over to you and your staff.
Excellent. Hello, good evening. My name is Colin Slavy, an associate planner with the Humboldt County Planning Department. And I have a presentation, right there, for the Daniel's residence. It includes a coastal development permit, a variance, and a couple of special permits. Okay. There we go. So the project is primarily a coastal development permit for the construction of a 1,100 square foot residence. It's two stories, total square footage is 1,630. A special permit for major vegetation removal, and a second special permit for the Shelter Cove Design Review. And then finally, a variance for the reduction of the front yard setback from 20 feet to 6 feet 3 inches. This presentation is going to include kind of three parts. The project location, the site characteristics, major issues that were brought up during the course of the project, including sea level rise and wave run-up hazards, soils and erosion risk, tree removal, the special permit around it, and biological resources, specifically suggestion that there was a freshwater stream. And then finally, a discussion of the variance. Okay. So this project is located on Sea Court, which is just off of Lower Pacific Drive in Shelter Cove. The APN is 111121037. And you can see a good image of it there, a better image of it here. So it is located on a bluff, it's a tight site, there are residences on either side. And here is a copy of the site plan. The property line was surveyed in the course of the project. And some of the interesting parts that are highlighted, which are hard to read, include the front yard setback, which is 6 feet 3 inches, and then juxtaposed with the 20-foot setback, which was previously the setback required by the zone. I highlighted off-site parking, which is off the property in what is not currently a developed right-of-way of Sea Court Drive, or excuse me, of Sea Court, which is going to be developed as a parking lane. I highlighted the kind of existing edge of the paving down below. I highlighted the property line as surveyed. I highlighted, laser pointer, I highlighted the existing Monterey Cypress, which is to be removed, which is kind of in the middle there. At the front, I highlighted the location of fencing, which is existing, which is going to be removed, which is outside of the property line in the county right-of-way. And then an existing Monterey Cypress, which is not going to be removed. The site faces a couple of unique characteristics. So it is small. It's .14 acres. Some unique elements of this property include an unbuilt-able area beyond the bluff on the wave slope of the Pacific Ocean. The bulge of Sea Court, which is kind of visible, it's the gray paved area, which is unique to this property, not to the one north. I guess it is shared by the property to the south. It is exposed to wave run-up, and what that looks like is during kind of storm surge and significant kind of tide events. Waves will actually come up over that wave slope onto the property and rush kind of across the whole thing. This was identified as a hazard, and we'll talk about it a little bit more later. And then another element of the site characteristics is until that bluff edge, the slope is less than 15%. Some parcel site conditions and constraints include that unbuilt-able wave slope, include the bluff edge, and what is essentially an unbuilt-able area, which is beyond the, about 10 feet beyond, excuse me, 20 feet beyond the prescribed 30-foot setback of the zone. So whereas one would be able to build, you know, five feet beyond or 10 feet beyond the rear parcel boundary, in this case, there's an additional 20 feet where there just isn't any option to build. Additionally, like I said, the front of the parcel boundary sweeps inwards along Sea Court, which there, as an example, if you were to draw a line between the front of each house on either side, the proposed structure, or I guess the, where there is an opportunity to build, there'd be about 15 feet difference. So the build-able area is uniquely set back from the parcel boundary and from the neighboring parcels. The proposed building site is coming up.
Yeah. It's got to be coming. It's on my screen. It's here.
Presentation's waiting a little bit long. What should we do?
Buffering and, so this is the actual proposed building site. The build-able area without a variance is about 800 square feet. The build-able area with a variance, which is being maximized by the architect and the applicant, is about 1,100 square feet. And you can just kind of get an idea of what it looks like there. Mostly flat, covered in some non-native vegetation.
Here's what the elevations look like. The structure was redesigned a number of times through the planning process, which I'll get into a little bit more later. But because of that wave uprush, or the wave run-up risk, the foundation was actually elevated off of the ground, which raised the structure above the prescribed 20-foot height limit of the Shelter Cove Design Review limitations, or actually it was a special combining zone, which essentially squeezed the house. And so we were dealing with maximum or minimum height, a maximum height, and we resulted in this. So two-story building, residence. Here is kind of an X-ray view of it, and you can get a kind of a better idea of that elevated foundation, you can see on the left-hand side. Now, the reason for these specific designs is the first major concern that we're going to talk about today, which is sea level rise and wave run-up risk. There are other concerns, including the risk of soils and erosion, the concern around the tree removal, and the concern again about biological resources, that stream. So first of all, the concern with sea level rise and wave run-up is that there is an increased risk of wave run-up over the course of the next, well, of the life of the project because of sea level rise. This hazard was specifically identified by the Coastal Commission's engineers. And the combination of the risk of wave run-up, plus the project's proximity to the bluff edge, and elevation above sea level, raised a red flag, and they suggested perhaps we wouldn't be able to make the findings necessary to support the project. So the applicant's response to that is, was commissioning a couple of engineers to do a formal wave uprush analysis to determine what the actual wave run-up risk was. They calculated it to be about plus 35 feet above sea level, kind of at the maximum with sea level rise assumptions. There's a lot more details, but I'm keeping it relatively sparse. But the Coastal Commission insisted that they stick with the plus 30 feet, plus 43 feet hazard and projection. And so the structure was designed to allow flow through the property underneath the house up to an elevation of 43 feet above sea level. So this solution involved redesigning the foundation, which addressed and reduced the potential hazard of the wave uprush, as well as, or additionally, the applicants required to record a deed restriction and waiver of liability, assumption of risk and agreement to hold harmless because of the inherent risk of the property and developing the property. And the other solution was the variance that's proposed for the modified front yard setback, which again allows for a larger setback from the bluff, from that wave risk and any potential erosion. The second concern was, so was an erosion risk. So the proximity to the bluff's edge put the development at risk because the concern was that soil would erode and the house would fall into the ocean. Again, so the applicant responded with two reports and analyses regarding soils and erosion, specifically an R2 soils report and that wave uprush analysis, which also went forward to assess historical erosion of that bluff. The two images that I have on the left-hand side show 1943 on the bottom, and I think 2023 on the top, and point out a couple of distinct geologic characteristics or elements, those notches, that big shelf out in front of the project site, those channels. And generally, they concluded that there wasn't any significant erosion over that period of time. And in the magic which is doing coastal engineering, determined that it's unlikely that's going to be additional erosion to the future, at least significantly, and enough to pose a risk to the structure over the life of the structure. And so the solution was, the applicant is expected to adhere to all engineering recommendations, and they designed the structure's foundations accordingly. Here are some additional images of the bluff. The top right is the 1972 coastal record project, and the left is the 2013 coastal record project. Just an interesting juxtaposition. Issue, condition, concern, number three, is the proposed removal of the Monterey Cypress on the parcel. So again, there are two trees on the parcel, well, two trees in the, in the area. Following a survey of the property boundary, it was determined that this particular Cypress is pretty much completely on the applicant's property. And so, but I guess the concern regarding the proposed tree removal is the following. One, aesthetic value, which we had to address in the findings required for major vegetation removal and coastal scenic areas, that the removal of the tree wouldn't be detrimental to the overall aesthetic value of the area. And then the other concern that the public had was the soil stability, and the suggestion that perhaps the root system of the tree supports the neighbor's property and the bluff in general. So regarding the tree removal, the applicant submitted a boundary survey, again, finding that the tree majority, the majority of the tree, the tree is on the applicant's property. They submitted a soils engineering report also, which included recommendations for vegetation removal. And so the solution to this particular problem is twofold. One, that if the tree is removed and the applicant adheres to the recommendations in the soil engineering report, the hazards to soil stability might be reduced or addressed. And then second, the solution is the planning commission's discretion on whether or not they want to approve the special permit for major vegetation removal that is part of this project. Here's the location on the survey. And then finally, the last concern is regarding the biological resources and the suggestion that there might be a freshwater stream, a subsurface freshwater stream that runs through the property and drains down on the wave slope. The response to this particular concern was the submission of a biological reconnaissance report, which surveyed the site for environmentally sensitive habitat area, and the soils report, which included bore testing, I think that's, yeah, bore testing. And they, in that course of action, investigated the site, looking for groundwater. And neither investigation found any indication of fresh groundwater or any subsurface stream below the property. And so again, the solution to this particular concern would be to adhere to the recommendations in the soils engineering report and the biological reconnaissance report. So those were the four concerns. And now we're going to kind of discuss the variance and setback modification. The top is cut off, but up there it says need the decreased front yard setback. We've addressed this a couple times in this presentation already, so I'll be quick. So the point of it is to increase the setback from the bluff edge, account for the bulge of Sea Court, and meet the Shelter Cove Design Review development standards, which is a minimum size of the structure, which is 20 feet by 20 feet at least. And then an additional consideration for this setback modification of the variance is the development of a off-site parking area, a parking lane in front of the parcel between what is currently paved and what is not paved, just to kind of address and like make the space to make the structure not feel kind of bearing and give an opportunity for necessary parking for the people who are using the site and the neighbors. So that one's a pretty quick reference, and I think the same one is just a slightly modified slide. And that's kind of the last element of the project. So the variance in order to enable development. And that is the conclusion. Thank you.
Commissioner Mulder.
Through the chair to staff. I just want to make sure I heard this correctly in your staff report. In the event this was approved, you, I heard you say something about a deed restriction and a hold harmless agreement. So if I'm understanding that correctly, if anything negatively happened, if this project was approved and if it was built, the county would not be held liable for that. Is that correct or incorrect?
Correct, yes. And then there is another element to the recorded and the recommendations from the Coastal Commission, which is like no bluff armoring, so no seawall, so they can't build anything which would prevent possible erosion. But yes.
Okay. And then the other part of it is what I heard in your report was the request for the variance to increase the, or decrease the front setback is so, to come away from that bluff, to get away from that bluff because the rear of the parcel has to be setback so far from that.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner West.
The tree removal, can you just, so it's not quite in the building's footprint, but the justification for the tree removal is simply to provide more space for the, like, what is the justification, I guess, for the tree removal since it's not directly in the house footprint?
That is a good question. I don't know exactly how to address that one. It might be most appropriate for the project architect to discuss it.
Okay. And then I had a, just a follow-up question with that, just to make sure I was following correctly. The fence that we saw, that the tree is sort of growing through, that looks like it is determined to be within the applicant's property, right? It's over the property line.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Curriozzi.
On the, on the tree, can you clarify what about the tree removal is triggering a special permit? Is it the diameter of the tree, or?
Correct, yes. So it's major vegetation removal in the coastal zone. So a certain diameter of tree, I think it's 36 inches diameter of breast height, requires a special permit.
And is that from an old-growth perspective or more aesthetic perspective? Do you know?
Yeah, I can kind of speak to that. It is simply a requirement, but part of the, part of the findings that we make in order to support major vegetation removal is that the tree's removal is subordinate to the character of the setting, and because, it's mostly that it's, that it's subordinate to the character of the setting, right? And so I guess the idea of there's a large, pretty tree, that removing it would be kind of detrimental.
So the, really what that code provision does is it makes sure that if you are doing a significant amount of vegetation removal, so not, it's not really old-growth related, just any vegetation removal that rises to a certain threshold, that it has to go through a discretionary process.
Commissioner West.
Regarding the public comment we received, that there is, I think, the groundwater flowing through the property and concerns that, and the evidence that was submitted demonstrating demonstrating what the applicant, what the public comment thought was water. Is there, like, it, there was a dog drinking from the water and there, it was, looked like it was standing water within the wave slope area. Is there any more that staff can speak to on that, besides that, the soils report and the other report, the other studies that were done on the property don't show that there's freshwater flowing through? Sorry, it's a little bit of a tricky question, I think, just.
Yeah, I think I can take a stab at that. You know, the picture shows a dog drinking out of what looks like a puddle of water kind of on the wave slope. And so there's no, I mean, that could be from rain, that could be saltwater. I mean, dogs do actually drink saltwater, mine does and throws it back up, right? But so, but again, we have a biological report where they went out and specifically looked for this, as well as, as Colin mentioned, the technical report, which did not find any groundwater under the site. So we're relying on those technical studies to conclude that there's nothing there that would be sensitive, there's no freshwater streams or anything. And I should note also, the coastal commission had also visited the site and did not raise any concerns about that.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Any other questions at this time? Okay. Then we'll go to the, we'll open the public hearing, and the applicant or the applicant's agent is welcome to address the commission. And you would have 10 minutes. So if you're here in the room and you want to address us, to the podium, thank you.
Thank you for the time. My name's Don Daniels, I'm the applicant. I'll just take a few seconds and the architect will take over because I don't know what I'm talking about on a lot of this stuff. But anyway, this has been a very arduous process. I've done a little bit of development and I've never been through anything like this, but I'm sure it's warranted. And, you know, we've raised the house and we've shortened it. I'm not too tall, so I'll be good, not going to fuck with anything. But I just want to know that this is, I graduated from Humboldt in 88, and this has kind of been a dream of mine for a long time. And we think we've done everything right, and we're trying to be good citizens and good neighbors, and every time an issue was raised by the staff, we tried to meet it to the best of our ability. So I hope the outcome is, is that it's approved and we've done our level best. And I'll leave it to the architect, Tom, from here.
Hi, my name's Tom Bond, I'm the architect. Colin here has done a great job covering all the technical issues of the project, so I won't go over everything. But I did want, I did want it to be understood that we started this project in 2021, and we have gone through a series of exercises that are required by the county and by the coastal commission, and good engineering practices to make this project come together. We started out, we had a survey taken care of, we had soils engineers going out there. When we felt like we had a buildable area and soils that would support this, we felt we could go ahead. We had biological surveys, botanical surveys, archaeological surveys. And then the big issue that came up with the coastal commission was the elevation of the residents relative to the wave uprush. We hired an engineering company that specializes in this exact type of thing, and he came up with analysis that actually, through the discussions, his analysis was that the worst wave uprush would probably be about five feet below the elevation of the property, or 37 and a half feet. Coastal commission did not really buy that, they were using different sea level rise criteria, and they wanted to add that five and a half feet that Colin had mentioned. And so we considered arguing that point, but we decided that the better part of valor would be just accept their findings and then do what was needed to make that happen. And we raised the property, and coastal commission looked it over and felt that was appropriate. I didn't, I didn't mention before, but we also had a structural engineer who was involved in helping us design that foundation. So I think we've gone through this process in a very diligent manner. We've covered every aspect I can imagine with highly professional people, and the owner here has spent a tremendous amount of money to do that. Regarding some of the specific issues, you mentioned the Monterey Cypress. We don't have a site plan here, but, but the Monterey Cypress tends to be towards the bet, about the middle of the property, it's 24 feet from the edge of the bluff. And it spreads out a little bit into the neighboring property, but primarily that growth is all coming into the subject property. And it's pretty obvious that when that tree was planted, that tree was planted on the neighbor, I mean, on the subject property. It has grown quite a bit over 30, 40 years and has grown into the neighboring property. But that tree was planted on that property. As far as root removal and, well, the root removal was pretty much addressed by the soils report, so that's not truly a problem. They basically dig down and take out the major roots, backfill it, compress the ground and make it so as if the root was never there. The other thing that the neighbors have contended was that the roots of the tree are holding the bluff together, but that's absolutely not correct. The bluff is basically a rock bed. Our soils report indicates that there is between four and seven feet of soil above the rock bed. And so when you look at those, I keep thinking of the pictures up there, when you look at the pictures, they show all this rock. Well, above that rock is about four to seven feet, at least on our site, of soil. So that rock is holding the bluff together. 99% of the bluff itself is rock, and that's why there's been next to no erosion. So we're just talking about the top four to seven feet that we're going to disturb. But to counter that, we're going to take the foundations down to the rock and literally pin them into the rock. So there will be large, probably number seven dowels in the, bored down into the rock at whatever interval we calculated would be adequate to secure the house. That does a couple of things. It secures the house seismically. Were the bluff to erode, the house would still be there, but it'll be, you know, trenched, poured, backfilled properly so that there's no reason why there would be any detrimental effects. So the tree is not really holding anything together, it kind of ties the soil together, but once we pull it out, that soil will be recompressed and brought up to its normal levels. So I don't think that the tree is a significant issue in that it's on the neighbor's property, it's in, and it makes it absolutely impossible to build. When I went down to the site, first thing I saw was there's a tree in the middle of your property with all the branches, and they're large branches, you know? And I'm sure the neighbors love that tree, and I'm sure they're going to be sad to see it go, and it is too bad. If there was a lot more room, we would save it, but there isn't. Let's see. Oh, in terms of the variance, the variance is as he, as he described it, that the setback from the bluff has pushed the property, pushed the buildable area this way. The property line is here, the setback's way in here, leaving it, it's this little tiny wedge of space. So moving that, moving that property, allowing us to build farther into that area makes a lot of sense. And like he said, if you drew a line from the corner of the house to the north to the corner of the house to the south, we're behind that line. So if you were in a normal neighborhood, you know, 20-foot setback, everybody's in a line, well, we're behind that line. And because of some easement issues with the RAD down the Shelter Cove, we also went through a various process with them because we were asking them if we could build in their technical utility easement. And then we did some survey work and we found that there were actually no utilities in that easement because of that crazy property line, they just run the utility straight across. So Shelter Cove, we did a whole, you know, downscaled commission meeting like this and executed some legal documents, and the Shelter Cove folks felt that the variance was adequate. With respect to the underground stream, you know, there's underground water everywhere. We did our soils report, we found no evidence of water. I've walked that bluff a number of times, I've seen no evidence of anything other than maybe just a little bit of seawater here and there. There's certainly no evidence of anything that resembles a river. There may be underground water movement. It possibly might be flowing along the top of that rock bed I described below the, below the soil, or it may be flowing through the rock bed itself. If it's in the rock bed itself, it really doesn't mean anything, it's just a little bit of underground water flowing, and we would not disturb that in any way. In the event that we dug a foundation and we found that there was actually a lot of water there, then there's a procedure we go through, we would call a soils engineer, and they would come out and they would look at it, we would get in touch with the structural engineer, and we would look at it, and we would figure out what was the best solution to make sure that water doesn't get trapped or create problems anywhere. The, there's also some concern that our work would somehow destabilize the bluff for the neighboring properties, and I just don't see any way that we're going to destabilize the bluff because we're working on the top of that site and we're back five feet from the bluff or so. So we're, we're basically just dealing in soils that's sitting on top of a rock bed, and we're not going to impact the bluff at all. But I mean, we're not actually going to do anything on the bluff. And the soils report initially said that we needed to stay about five feet back from the bluff, and we argued that point because we kind of want to get farther out, but we ultimately said, okay, well, let's give in on that one too, and we've set the house back, which is kind of why we're looking at this issue with the variance. In terms of parking, there was some concern about the parking, but the parking configuration, I threw out a few ideas, but the people at Public Works came back to us with a sketch that says, this is what we want. And that's exactly what's on the site plan now, that we pave everything from the edge of the roadway to the property line, and that's all done in asphalt at their request, and then we are allowed to park in that space. So two cars easily fit in that space without uncovering the neighbors. And because we have such a wide spot on the road, and, okay, well, anyway, it's a very wide spot on the road, which is why we have those issues. I think that covers it.
Yeah, thank you. We'll allow you more time at the end if we have any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
At this point, anybody else in the room that would like to address the commission on this topic, please approach the podium. And if there's anybody online that wants to address this topic, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. And I don't see any. Sorry if I asked the applicant to come back up for a couple of questions. The architect, please.
I have some questions and I, any, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Chair. Well, I do have a quick one. Thanks for your presentation. Just want to make sure I'm understanding clearly, because I do understand the configuration of the parcels and the street is unusual, but you're saying that even with the variance, if granted, even with the variance that you're seeking to reduce the setback, if one were to draw a line from the corner of the two adjacent houses, this house would in fact be back behind that line?
I do. It's a small printout.
We can pull that up, let us pull it up on the screen.
Yeah, it's better to show it on the whole screen, but I believe you, and I think it was shown earlier on the site map.
I don't know if you can clear, but it's, here, can you put it?
We'll pull it up.
Yeah.
It's well back from, from corner to corner. So I don't know if the house to the south is actually at the setback, they may be actually in front of the setback because they were, well, you can see it, you can't see the house to the top.
Oh, you can kind of, the, the.
Oh, yeah, you can, yeah.
Yeah, you can.
So you can just draw a line, you can see, it's very clear.
Got it. And this is, yes, this is with the variance that you seek, that this is the location.
Yes.
The reduced setback still does mean that it is in fact set back further than the adjoining houses.
Exactly.
That makes the point pretty clearly.
Yes.
Thanks, just wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
You can leave that site plan up for a minute. So the, I'm going to come back to the tree. You said the tree was planted, so, and it's a Monterey Cypress?
Monterey Cypress.
So it's not a native?
Not a native tree.
Okay. And the picture that showed the trunk of the tree kind of growing through the fence, the fence is not on the property line, is that what I'm understanding?
The fence is actually about six inches into the, the subject property.
Okay.
And I think the owner may be willing to live with the fence there.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think we want to be the type of neighbors that say, tear down your fence and move it six inches.
Okay.
So I think we leave the fence there and we'll tear the tree out and we'll argue about who repairs the fence, maybe, but.
Fix the fence part.
Other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward and we'll.
Okay. And, and it seems like there's other trees in the area, maybe not on this property, but there's, looked like there's another Cypress tree right out front.
Well, there's another Cypress tree in front, which is, which will still be there and be visible and.
And then on the foundation, the packet that we get comes out a little earlier, and we got the soils report and an addendum to the soils report, but the, the drawings that we had didn't actually show the recommended foundation that I think you now have. At least I didn't understand it to, in our packet, it showed kind of different footing. So might have been an earlier, might have been an earlier version, I just want to confirm. You're doing the foundations that are shown, that are recommended in the soils report, which is to go down to bedrock, penetrate bedrock if you can, and if not, dowel into bedrock.
Into the bedrock.
Into the bedrock.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and you're going to do that on the bluff side as well as farther back in the house?
Yeah.
Like two rows of, or with gray beans in between or something like that?
What actually happens is that the foundation is actually stem walls that are perpendicular to the bluff. And there's no concrete parallel to the bluff, so to speak.
Right.
So that any water that came up could flow through between those footings and out the front. And if there was ever flooding on the other side, because we are on the downside of everywhere from the hill, flooding would work the other way, going out to sea.
And as I read the soils report and the engineering, they're designing that such that even if that soil that's between the house and the, and the edge of the bluff were to erode away, that foundation is designed so that even if those pilings were ultimately exposed, that they would still support the house.
That's correct.
Right?
That's correct, yeah. So even if there was erosion, the fix would be to come in and build, build the soil back up. But yeah, we're all the way down to bedrock, you could take all the soil out of there.
Correct. So the fix may, fix may be to build it back up, or you may not be allowed to build it back up, whatever, but the house would still stand.
Right.
On the foundation as it's designed, without the soil there supporting it.
Absolutely correct.
If there was wave run-up or sea level rise or whatever. That's all I had. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission. I see nobody else, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring this back to Commissioner Kurjazny.
Just, if we could humor me for a moment, I'm coming, our sort of digging into these details is really coming from a health, safety, and welfare perspective in terms of our role. And I'm just, I'm curious where, to staff, we have this release of liability, I'm curious what's being, what liability is being released, kind of from this health and safety and welfare
Well, there's a couple of things that, and as Colin had mentioned, one of the things it does is it does say that they agree that they would not be able to construct a seawall or something like that, that in many cases could not be consistent with the coastal act. The liability also is that they are building something that is subject to potential hazards. So it is, you know, it's been well-designed, I think, for sea level rise and wave run-up, but there still could be damage done during large storm events. And so it would also hold the county not liable for any damage that happens as a result of permitting the residents. Typically, there would also be a liability so that they would agree to defend the county as well in the event of a loss. as well in the event of a lawsuit. So, I'm just looking at the specific language here. That's, that's basically what that would do.
And i- is that, are we, is it the liability of harm to the, the owners of this property that were being released?
No, it's, it's really to protect the county. I mean, what happens in a case like this is the, the county's approving a permit and other people may feel like they have been harmed by the issuance of that permit. So, what the applicant is agreeing to do is indemnify and defend the county if anybody else has a problem with that. Okay? And since it's being recorded on the property, it passes on to future owners as well.
You have a question? Commissioner Mulder?
I don't know if it's necessary, well, I guess the first part is maybe through the chair to staff. I just want to make sure, I, I want to make sure that I understand in, not the release liability, but the deed restriction. So, say for example, a massive storm event happens and all the top soil erodes. The way I understand it is this house will still stand on the rock underneath of it and they can't do anything to mitigate that soil erosion per the restriction. So, it'll be a house on stilts, on rock if there's a catastrophic event. And that's why it's engineered that way. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that part correctly.
Correct. Correct.
And I'm not sure that detail is totally correct. They can't build a seawall or armor the slope, but they might be able to re- replace fill into the house or something. I don't, I, I don't know. That would, you know, they might have to get a coastal permit and go through whatever that process, but is that...
If I'm understanding your cr- your question correctly, if in the circumstance where all of the soil did erode off of the top of the bluff, the house would still exist standing on stilts, on the rock?
Correct.
Correct, yes. That would be what it would look like. As far as them replacing soil or building a seawall or any other bluff protection devices, that's not allowed.
And if they were trying to do that, that would be a different, possibly a different type of permit. But the biggest thing is if approved, this structure in a catastrophic event, the structure would still be there. It is kind of the main point that I was trying to get to.
Thank you. Commissioner West?
I don't have any more questions, so I don't want to jump in front of anybody who does have questions.
I do have a couple of comments on the conditions of approval that I'd like to address. Number one, the project should be constructed in accordance with the approved site plan. I would like to add soils reports, wave run-up analysis and construction plans to that. And then on item... Where are we?
Can you just slow down? Let us make sure we get the notes right.
Sure. So, I can say it again, after site plan, I would insert soils reports, plural, and wave run-up analysis.
Okay. Why do you want to include those?
Because I want to make sure that the design that the county reviews, that they have the soils report and wave run-up analysis when they're reviewing the building permit so they can check to make sure the plans incorporate all of those items that are recommended in soils report, because the plans that I saw attached to the sta- our staff report didn't necessarily reflect that. And I just want to make sure that when it gets building permitted, it does.
Okay.
Okay? And then under item nine C refers to in the event of the edge of the bluff recedes to within 10 feet of the development. The bluff is already within 10 feet of the development, so that condition doesn't make sense to me. And I would restate it to say, in the event the edge, and the soils engineer doesn't call it a bluff, calls it a marine terrace. In the event the edge of the marine terrace recedes to expose the seaward edge of the support columns and no government agency has ordered that the structures not be occupied, a geotechnical investigation shall be prepared to make sure everything's still okay. It should be. But basically what we're saying is if the soil does erode that column, let's just make sure everything's okay. So, the owner would again hire a geotechnical engineer to say it's okay. And I don't think as it reads currently with the 10-foot, they'd have to do it now because it's already more than 10 feet away or less than 10 feet. Does that make sense? Okay? That's all I had. You have a question or call for a motion?
I, just real briefly, the, it seems like a, a variance is justified in this circumstance and I feel comfortable supporting that motion. And I appreciate that the, it's, it's challenging to build on a, a property that is subject to hazards and it, it seems like a lot of due diligence has been done to retain the property owner's right to build on their property and make sure it's done in a way that can withstand the conditions that are there. So, I am feeling good about supporting the, as, as things are set up with the additional changes.
Okay. I do as well. I think you did a, a good job fitting a, a home in under all the, all the constraints and challenges of that site, so. Okay. I'll call for a motion if somebody could...
I'm happy to move that we adopt the resolution, attachment one, which does the following. Finds that we, the planning commission, have considered the project's exemption from environmental review under SEQA section 15303 for new construction or conversion of small structures, which applies to the construction of one single-family residence. And we find that the proposed project complies with the South Coast Area Plan and zoning ordinance. And so, we approve the coastal development permit, special permit and the variance subject to the recommended conditions of approval, specifically as, as noted in attachment one A, but with the two slight alterations of conditions suggested by Chair Chavdol, Chair Scavdal that I agree with.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Levy and a second by Commissioner West. Any discussion on the motion?
Just a quick discussion. I feel that we did receive a decent amount of public comment on this. I feel staff, the applicant and the applicant's engineers did their best at mitigating those concerns. I did notice the one part that it did say, regardless of our action, it may get appealed to one of the Coastal Commission or the Board of Supervisors. But I feel that everyone did their due diligence to mitigate the concerns that were brought up. So, I am in support of this.
Okay, could we have a, a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Scavdal?
Yes.
Commissioner Motor?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Commissioner Curiezi?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. I think we have quite a few people going to speak on the next item. I suggest we take a break. Come back, I'll give you some oddball time. We'll go 7:08. So, we'll come back at eight minutes after the hour and we'll hear the staff report And...
Recording in progress.
We're going to hear item two on, on the agenda for a public hearing for Sacred Groves Neeland Cemetery Conditional Use Permit in the Neeland area. And Director Ford, I'll turn it over to you and staff for a, a report to the commission.
Good evening, commissioners and member of public in attendance tonight. Tonight, we're going to talk about the Sacred Groves Neeland Cemetery Conditional Use Permit. I've prepared a presentation. We'll run through that and then we'll have time for questions. The project is a conditional use permit for a green burial cemetery in Neeland. Access to the site is a private road off of Neeland Road. Visitation of the site will be limited with a locked gate. The project includes oak savanna restoration, which is something I'll describe a little bit more later. There will be a ceremonial structure built and a parking area will be constructed on one of the parcels. The project doesn't propose any electricity use. There will be a rainwater catchment system used to catch water, which will irrigate for the first year, tree plantings that are associated with this cemetery. The general location for the project is in Neeland. You can see the blue parcels highlighted. Those are the parcels that are part of the project. This is a zoomed-in look at the project area. The, you can see Neeland Road down on the bottom bisects one of the parcels. Then the access road works its way up on the eastern side of the parcel into the project area, which you can see the light-colored area is a hayfield and you can kind of pick out the windrows of the hay that, that, when this photo was taken. The project does also include burials in forested areas. Graves will be dug by hand to reduce damage to tree roots. And maybe it's a good time to talk about what a green burial cemetery is. Essentially, burials will occur with unembalmed bodies and all burial materials will be biodegradable. This project doesn't propose any above-ground monuments or structures beyond the ceremonial structure. So, there, there will be no above-ground grave markers in this cemetery. This is a site plan prepared for the project. The site plan shows the location of the parking area, road, ceremonial structure. Essentially, it's, the structure as envisioned is similar to like a picnic pavilion at a park. And that'll be available for cemetery patrons to conduct ceremonies in bad weather. Also shown on the map is a 30-foot setback from the parcel on the western side of the project area. This was kind of a project modification that occurred this summer. The applicant has also instituted setbacks from Black Creek, which is about 200 feet away from the project area on the southwestern portion of the project. Also shown is a ephemeral water course and we'll talk about that a little more when we get into the project conditions. This is the grassland project area pictured, just so you get an idea of what we're talking about. This grassland is managed for hay production and that will continue with the operation of the cemetery. The, this is a detail of the parking area and sanctuary shelter structure. It will be developed to ADA standards and the project also includes a portable toilet, which will be handicap accessible. So, there will be no permanent septic system installed and there, there will also be a fire suppression tank included in the project. This is the approximate location for the, the structure, 1,500 square foot structure. The project is a discretionary permit based on the conditional nature of the use in the zone. So, a initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared. Two potential environmental impacts were identified and mitigated. A notice or proposed for mitigation, notice of intent to adopt was mailed and published September 23rd. No comments were received on the initial study. The mitigation and monitoring reporting program is included in the project conditions of approval. I guess I should talk about the mitigations. Essentially, there were two environmental issues identified, potential impacts to biological resources and impacts to, potential impacts to cultural and native resources. The impacts were associated with a cultural resource site that is in the vicinity of the project area. The mitigation for that is for the applicant to prepare a development plan that excludes those areas from the project area. In other words, the project area will not include the cultural resource area. That development plan will be recorded, or sorry, the notice of development plan will be recorded with the assessor. So, if and when the project or the property changes hands, the new owner of the property will be aware that no development can occur in those areas. That is the same condition essentially that applies to this ephemeral stream channel. That area will be excluded from the project area in the development plan, so no burials will occur in that area. We have, and that was the extent of the mitigations for the project. We have received public comments on this project. That's part of the supplemental package that you've received. We had 20 public comments. 18 comments were in support of the project. Two comments were from a neighboring property owner who voiced questions and concerns. The concern that was raised through this comment that wasn't addressed in the project description and supporting materials in the ISMND is a utility line easement that runs through the project area. So, cultural resources, part of that impact category is included the disturbance of human remains. So, in conditioning this project, we don't want to get in a situation where in the future human remains are disturbed. human remains are disturbed. And the fact that the utility easement was running through the project area necessitates a revision of our conditions of approval to exclude that utility easement from the areas that are eligible to have people buried in. So that, that'll be mapped, that'll be, and the development plan will be recorded. So future folks know that if an electrical line or something's going through there, they know not to dig, or they know where to dig and where not to dig. So that's a revision to condition of approval A2, just to include deeded easements as an area where burials will not occur. Conditions, Humboldt County Public Works requested driveway improvements. We can see the driveway here and Neeland Road. They are going to require paving of the first, I believe, 50 feet of the driveway. And they're, they're standard requests for driveway improvements. We do request that we add a condition of approval tonight, which would be for the applicant to pay the required CEQA filing and recording fee. That was a mission that I made, but we're going to add that tonight. And I discussed the, the development plan a little bit earlier. We're just going to revise that condition to include the deeded easement of the utilities. And also there is, I believe, a 40-foot ingress egress easement for the Coffin property. We're going to make sure that that is recorded as well, so we don't have burials occurring in that area. So tonight's recommendation is to adopt a negative declaration prepared for the project. Adopt a mitigation and monitoring and reporting program, which will ensure that we have that development plan recorded, or excuse me, we have a development plan on file and the notice of development plan is filed on the deed. That you make all the required findings for approval for the conditional use permit and would approve the Sacred Groves Conditional Use Permit. And I think, yeah, that, that's my presentation. We may have additional questions and I've got a few more slides prepared if, if there's questions from the commission or the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff at this time? Seeing none, I will.
No questions, but I do just want to make a very brief ex parte disclosure that I have known Michael Furnas a bit professionally and personally. And I've met with him a couple of times in the last year about this project. Haven't worked for it and I don't really know any details other than what's being given to the rest of us.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I will open a public hearing. It looks like we may have a few speakers. The applicant will have 10 minutes to present the project. The rest of you that want to speak to the commission regarding the project will each have three minutes. I am going to ask you to honor those time constraints for us. We have other items on the agenda, on our agenda this evening as well. So we'll be here probably long past this item. So if you could honor those time constraints, I'd really appreciate it. I don't like to have to be the bad guy. And I will take people in the room first and then anybody online. And then after everybody's spoken, I will ask the applicant if they have anything additional they want to say in response to those comments. So you'll have another chance to address us at the, at the end. So please proceed, you have 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you Commissioners. I am Michael Furnas. I'm the Executive Director of the Sacred Groves Nonprofit Organization. I'm a soil scientist and plant nutrition expert and watershed protection expert. I'm a 33-year veteran of the research branch of the U.S. Forest Service and retired. I'm currently an adjunct professor at Cal Poly, currently teaching road location and design. And also teach climate change and land use, advanced hydrology, and recently taught climate and energy in the engineering school at Cal Poly. As a soil scientist, I've had long interest in natural burial, all the way since my twenties, actually. And with the help of my land partner and conservation luminary, Eric Omquist, who's here tonight, we finally have a real project proposal that could really serve our community and those wishing for this lovely form of final disposition. I'm a longstanding member of a couple of national communities of practice in conservation burial. And we have several nationally eminent experts, advisors, helping us out and are excited about our project. So we are a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) nonprofit with an active board of directors and several highly knowledgeable and experienced local advisors. So it's abundantly clear that many people want and need this option. It is not currently available here. The closest green burial option is hundreds of miles away. And there's a minor exception that by special arrangement with the Gravedigger at Trinidad Cemetery, a green burial can be arranged. But Trinidad is very nearly full. And the Trinidad City Council has recently tripled the price to discourage clients in hopes of saving the very few remaining spots for Trinidad residents or those having relatives that are buried there. So Trinidad's just about done. And we have about 492 people so far, mostly local people, that have signed up and are following our progress. So as an educator, repetition is the mother of learning. So I'll just give you very simply again what green burial means. It involves entering an unembalmed body in a simple biodegradable shroud or casket. The body is placed in a relatively shallow grave, three or four feet deep, with no concrete vault or plastic liner, so as to promote aerobic decomposition. So simply no embalming, only biodegradable materials and no concrete vault or plastic liners. Those have come into common practice in conventional cemeteries that facilitate lawn maintenance, basically, which we don't need. So further, we've gone with the conservation burial best practices and certification process. And we are seeking that. And it is very strict standards for how we operate, extensive and rigorous best practices. And we intend to do restoration work with funds set aside for additional conservation efforts. And so there's a big movement across the country for conservation burial. There's about 20 such cemeteries so far. And it's a really growing and exciting movement. In terms of planning, of course, the site quality, where you are and what the context of the site is, of course, is highly important. And so I just wanted to mention that. It is a ridge top location. It has a highly suitable soil, which is crucial and is a big reason we chose and are pursuing this site. It has excellent, deep, well-textured loamy soil, good organic matter, good percolation characteristics and infiltration, good aggregate stability, rich biota and is highly fertile. So it's really an ideal soil. And that really turns me on. And because it's a ridge top, there's no groundwater. There's almost no recharge area and it's a resistant, low fractured kind of rock. And so there isn't any groundwater where we're going to operate. It appears down below. And only one very small ephemeral stream that will be off limits. This stream has a flow duration of about one or two months per year. So it's completely dry in the summertime and doesn't have those wetland characteristics. But we will completely avoid it anyway. It's well buffered. There's no erosion or landslide hazards. We have a very good road in use without incident for about 175 years. It has, this project has extremely low, low impact, very low density burial, about 10% of conventional burial density. It incorporates restoration treatments, moving back toward the more native condition. And human impacts are limited by visitation limits, as Andrew has described. And the lack of impacts is thoroughly documented in the initial study. So I just wanted to finish with a few common questions. I've talked to a lot of people about this and a couple of things always come up. And the first one is, and this comes up over and over again and it's kind of surprising. It's like, is that legal? Yes, it's legal. It's legal in all 450 states and has been for quite a while. So, and then the other one to mention is animal disturbance. So we bury relatively shallow according to state health and safety regulations. And people say, well, the animals will dig these bodies up. And that does not happen. There's no evidence whatsoever of that ever happening in the United States. And I checked with the Gravedigger, who's, Bob Wilson, who's buried hundreds or even thousands of people here. And he said, no, that's never happened. It just doesn't happen. And so it's, it's a concern that people bring up and are worried about. It's not a thing. So, and so to conclude, people want and need this. We know what we're doing in terms of establishing and beginning to operate this facility. And I thank the Planning Shop very much for their work. It's, we applied for, began our application about a year ago. And we've been working with, mainly with Andrew and, and some with Cliff. And that, that's been a very interesting and educational and helpful process. So, so thank you for your consideration and we'll take it from there.
Thank you. Now, if anybody else in the room would like to speak, please do. And you have three minutes.
I'm Eric Omquist. I'm the landowner there. And I thought I'd just give you a quick introduction. We have first bought property up there in 2008. I always wanted to get a sort of a combination of rural timberland property. And since then, we've been able to add some additional parcels adjacent to our original purchase, now totaling about 550 acres. I do the haying up there. It's not terribly profitable, but it does get the fire hazard knocked down. And we're able to feed some onsite animals as well as sell a bit of hay. And I just thought, when this was first proposed, that it seemed like it aligned so well with our goals, which was always from the outset of our interest there was to get a conservation easement on this parcel, which we're in the process now with the North Coast Land Trust to do that. Poised, hopefully, to have that finalized this year. And this green burial just kind of locks it down, makes it, just assures that this is going to be a conservation parcel, basically forever. And so that's, that's a little history there to the property. This was originally a ranch. The original settlers up there, John Neeland, built the, this was his ranch and built the old homestead that was adjacent to it. And of course, it's been called different things over the years. But anyway, it originally, at its greatest size was about 600 square feet or 600 acres. And now we've almost put the whole thing back together again. That's our goal. Questions?
We'll come back to you if we have questions later. Thank you. If anybody else in the room would like to speak, please approach the podium.
Thank you Commissioners. My name is Mark Daniels. I'm a general contractor and co-owner of a coffee house in Ferndale. And I do work through a nonprofit that I founded called Make Access, ICA, Apprenticeships. And I go to, I've been going for 32 years to small villages in the Aleutian Islands, Pirbiloff Islands of Alaska. I worked in small native villages. And I'm very much in favor of this green burial site and the movement toward that. And I think it's very good for communities to have that option. I've seen it firsthand in these, that's why I mentioned the villages in Alaska. It's because it's always green burial in the villages. It has been since the beginning of time. And what I want to mention is that it's very healing for a community. It's very good for the, for the well-being of a community. When somebody passes away in the community, it's the family and the community that lovingly, lovingly prepare the deceased, build the casket, dig the grave, care for the person. And, and that heals a community. And I've seen it so many times over the years. And ever since I started learning about green burial, I, I know I'm in favor of it. And I think it's wonderful that we might have that option more in our region. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Wheeler. I reside in McKinleyville. I've spent most of my life outside, working as an ecological scientist and steward, land steward, public land steward, conserving wild and working public lands and enriching and cultivating my own privately-owned soil. As an organic organism substantively made of carbon minerals and microorganisms, after the end of my lifetime, I'd like to return to the essential elements from which I was formed inside my mother's womb as she absorbed nourishment from the soil, plants and beasts of our planet. I don't want my last contributing act on this earth, if at all possible, to be adding to more human-caused pollution. No cremation carbon emissions, no forever garbage in or on the ground, no plastic flowers, no polyester flags. I want my children and grandchildren to come visit my final resting place in the most natural place possible. And in doing so, offer them a place to find communion, perspective and beauty in an increasingly disordered world. In that way, I can continue to be a mother for them and play a small ecological role for soil organisms, plants and wildlife. This form of body aftercare isn't a pragmatic approach for every spiritual ideology. But for those whose spiritual kinship is more aligned with the interconnectedness of nature, I think it's a vital option that should be provided. Let's let the proposed property known as Sacred Groves Neeland be the first green burial sanctuary in Humboldt County. I ask you to think outside the norm and approve this permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. My name is Rick Littlefield. I'm a resident of 50 years here in Humboldt County. And I've been in business here for over 40 years at Eureka Natural Foods. During our career there, we followed a mission statement and an ethos promoting self-help and personal responsibility and sustainability for the planet has been one of our major goals for what we do in our daily lives and what we try to instill in our staff. We have about 200 people that work there. And I'm not speaking on behalf of our company or those, those folks that work for us. I'm just speaking for myself personally. I would like to see this option in our county. It just seems like a, such a natural kind of a, an approach to end of life and with some dignity. And we don't have that choice right now. And there's no reason we should not have that choice. And so that's in your hands to help give that choice. And that allows us to fulfill what we, you know, we haven't made this up, but it's all about mind, body and spirit. And if you want to be in balance with your mind and your body and your spirit, you have to take care of all of those. We don't really have a way to blend those in the end of our lives and in our, with the remains that we leave behind. So I'll just encourage you to take this opportunity. It might seem like it's a bold thing, but it actually is the oldest thing on the planet. And it's ironic that it seems like it's sort of a new age kind of a thing because the way we're doing things now is the new thing. So this would be going back to the old thing. So anyway, it's got my personal support and I certainly hope that you follow suit with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'm Maggie Gaynor. I, I won't repeat what's already been said about the environmental benefits of natural burial. I will mention, in the early 1980s, I was Executive Director of Hospice of Humboldt in the early days of the hospice movement. And one of the most difficult things for our small staff and team of volunteer- And one of the most difficult things for our small staff and team of volunteers was, after a loved one had died, to watch middle-income and low-income families struggle with the only option they knew for burial and all we had in Humboldt County. So that's the cost savings for average, everyday folks and their families is also significant. So I just want to encourage you to approve the permit in this project. Thanks.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for holding this event tonight. I'm Rebecca Stauffer. I'm a retired physician. I worked 17 years in public health here, including as public health officer. And the minute I learned about this possibility and got to know Michael, I have been so enthusiastic about the thought of the cleanest, greenest, and really most beautiful way to bury our loved ones. And I have been the chief thorn in Michael's side for years to keep this project going. And I'm so excited that hopefully, we're nearing last steps, because Michael's getting phone calls weekly, "Are you open? We need you. Grandma just died." And we need this. It's so Humboldt County. It's time, so let's go. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room that would like to speak at this time? Any hands raised online?
There was one up for a while. You may want, there's one.
Oh, there is.
Yep.
Okay. Caller online, last four digits, 9290. Please press star six to unmute. You're unmuted. You have the...
Hi all.
Yes, we can hear.
So my name is Nicholas Verhey. I was born and raised here in Humboldt County, and I currently live in West Haven. Right now, I'm a student at Cal Poly Humboldt in the Range and Resource Science and Wild and Soils Program. And I work on campus in Dr. Chelsea O'Baby's Soil and Environmental Quality Lab, studying soil health and environmental contaminants. And I've recently become part of this Sacred Groves project as a future gravedigger. And I just wanted to quickly voice my support for it. It's been dutifully planned by Michael and his team. And I have full confidence that this site in Neeland is safe and appropriate for this use as a green burial cemetery. As Michael mentioned, the soil on the site has physical properties that will support the biological functions that are necessary to break down buried bodies and ensure that this project is safe and successful. And additionally, the planned burial practices of Sacred Groves, as others have said, have been modeled after many other successful and longstanding burial practices from around the world. And they've been vetted by a lot of folks with relevant scientific knowledge. And finally, I think that it's just a huge opportunity in this project to serve our community members and fulfill some emotional, spiritual, and environmental needs during the challenging decision of choosing that burial practice. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other callers online with their hands up at this time. I would, applicant, if you'd like to return to the podium, if you have anything else that hasn't been said, or if the Commissioners have any questions of the applicant at this time? Nope? Okay.
I have a question for the applicant. So my question is, you did bring this up, animals don't dig up graves. I read through all this stuff, and I'm thinking, Neeland, there's a bunch of bears up there. Or I've been told there's a bunch of bears up there. I've seen bears dig up things. And I read in your report that you may bury bodies as shallow as 18 inches. So God forbid, something happens and a body is dug up. What is the protocol? Because I don't believe I read that in your report.
Yeah, we will have a protocol for that. It isn't in place yet, but the probability of that is near zero. These animals didn't evolve with food being at that depth. The statutory burial requirement, that's 18 inches of soil on top of the burial. And that's plenty for a smell barrier. And there's just no incidents recorded whatsoever. And I've polled many people across the country, does this happen? Doesn't happen. So if it did happen, we need a protocol for that. So thank you for pointing that out.
So, thank you. So what I heard you say is, you will have a protocol in place in the event that something like that happened?
Yes, I think that's entirely appropriate. And then if we were particularly concerned about it or have some evidence that it might happen, there's ways of precluding that by putting down special, simple barriers, actually, that would tangle up the animal and discourage them. But basically, they just don't dig down that far, because there normally isn't any food there. And it turns out, we don't smell very good to animals. Not sure why that is, but, yeah. And then the odor, with the rapid decomposition that is encouraged by green burial, the odors go away very, very quickly. So, yeah.
Thank you for that.
I have some other questions for you, if you could stay. Who else regulates this industry? So if we give you, you know, this permit, but are there other state agencies or others that regulate?
There's a State Funeral and Cemeteries Bureau, but as a faith community, which we are, we're a registered California religious corporation, that doesn't apply. And so the primary regulation and state constitution actually gives the counties a primary authority for cemeteries. And in fact, if this county establishes their own cemetery, they can, there's no further regulation by the state. And then this has been, thanks to the Planning Shop, been through many different agencies, including Water Quality Control Board and Fish and Wildlife and you name it.
Yeah, environmental health, I saw that.
Yeah, environmental health was okay with it. And Dr. Stauffer, who's our board chair, and his making sure I never give up on this, has had discussions with Candy Stockton. And Dr. Stockton was enthusiastic and had no concerns.
Okay. I have a few more questions for you. This is probably one of the most intriguing topics that I've seen come before the Planning Commission. And something I'll admit, knowing very little about. So I spent some time reading your operations plan and also the PowerPoint, the presentation that you provided for us. I also have some questions, and it comes back to, again, to this burial depth. So I understand that we want to be in the aerobic soil zone. And so that's going to be three to four feet deep. And when we say that, I'm saying that's the depth of the grave, right? So that's to the bottom of the hole, and we're saying four feet.
Yeah, three to four feet, you know, to accommodate the depth of the casket or...
The casket would be above that. And so then above, then the space above that is the cover, the topsoil.
That's right. Yeah.
A couple of things, maybe some technicality, but when you cited the California Health and Safety Code, this 811 3.1, and I looked that up, and it does say 18 inches of earth or turf covering a casket or vault. It does not mention a shrouded body or, right? So this type of burial, it doesn't seem like it's really intended to address this type of a burial. And your own operations report references that a couple of times, to say 18 inches to the top of the casket or vault. And that's, so that led me to the, geez, you know, how concerned are we about? And I do think we have an obligation as a planning commission of protecting public health and safety, including those of us that have passed on and are in the ground, right? So, when I was looking at that, I said, well, if you went four feet, and I'm a big guy, so maybe I'd be, you know, maybe there's another 18 inches or so for the body. So there's about 30 inches of cover potentially there. And then do you mound over that also? Like, the soil that comes out, and you're going to place on a tarp, but has to go back, won't all go back, because part of it's being displaced by the casket or the body. Are you going to mound over?
That's right. There's usually a mound because of the displacement, but also because the soil has been decompacted by the excavation process.
Correct. And it's going to settle as it decomposes.
And then that settles back down. That's correct. Yeah.
Are you going to farm over the top of these mounded areas? So with farming equipment? Or how will you harvest hay in that situation?
Yeah, it's just a matter of mowing and then running a machine through. Eric could tell you how that works, but we should be able to do that. And then the grave itself might be just, take a weed eater to it or something like that. The health and safety regulations also allow that if it's a double burial, so another body on top, then the cover can be 12 inches. And a number of states have a requirement of 12 inches as a minimum burial depth.
Yeah, that concerns me. But when I looked at green burials, a lot of states have an 18 to 24-inch minimum cover. And if you do double stacking, you know, I don't even know how you would do that. And is that going to be done at the same time as one burial? Or you're going to re-excavate into an area where there isn't actually a casket to do a double stacking burial? That just doesn't sound practical to me.
Yeah, the way they do that in Trinidad is they put down a few boards, and so that they, when they excavate to put the second person in, they know when they're at the top of the previous burial.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's accommodations for that.
And they can do that as little as 12 inches of cover?
That's the law. And it's been the law since the early 70s.
No, that's the law for caskets and vaults.
It also includes shrouds. I've asked this.
I looked up the law myself and read it right out of the legal book, and I'm not an attorney, but it doesn't, it says caskets and vaults. And your own operation plan says burial depth regulations, it says in California, general requirement for burial depth is a minimum of 18 inches of soil or turf on top of the casket or burial vault.
Right.
So you're suggesting that the natural burial will be in a casket?
No, the natural burial may well be in a shroud, and we encourage shroud burials, actually. And, you know, what I tell people, and you can see this in my presentations where there's more detail on it, is to trust soil, as we do with septic fields, for example, where a family of four would put out in one day as much material that a body decomposes to in its whole time.
Yeah, that's not my concern. My concern is a dog or predators digging something up. And I understand what you're saying. It's never happened, you said, okay? But we all know a dog that has dug a hole 12 inches deep. We all do. And bears dig up beehives under the ground that are deeper than 12 inches. So that's my concern. And it would seem that you should commit to some minimum level of cover to make sure that these graves aren't desecrated.
I think that's a very good point, Commissioner Scottville. I, you know, because this has come up so much, I've done quite a bit of asking of people that are part of this community of practice and have been in this business a long time, and it just doesn't come up. And then this happens a lot with animal burial. And often, they are buried quite shallow. And again, it doesn't seem to come up, the animals don't go after that dead material. And a small amount of soil has enormous, if it's a half-decent soil, has enormous absorptive and adsorptive capacity for sequestering gases and anything else.
Okay, well, that's my concern.
Yeah, and I am interested, and Eric and I have talked about doing some tests and burying animals shallow and seeing what happens, because we do have a certain fauna out there. And if they're really interested, then we will adapt to that, because we definitely don't want things desecrated or dug up.
No, we don't. That would be terrible, right?
Yeah. And then I believe these regulations came about from people that are very familiar with cemetery practice. And that's why it is what it is, is that it's adequate.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
All right, I'd love to talk about this stuff, so wish there were more questions. But if you're interested in learning more about this, I am wide open to doing further education about it. And I know that this is the first time this has come to the county cemetery. There have been new cemeteries in Humboldt in quite a while, so...
Well, I do have one more question, actually, which Mr. Omquist brought up, the conservation easement that he's been working towards. And I was a little surprised, because I thought that that was the case from what I had heard from you. So I didn't see that specified in the staff report. And I understand that perhaps that's because it's not yet a done deal. But I thought it would be just maybe important to ask you, if you could explain to us a little bit more about how the conservation easement that Mr. Omquist has been pursuing meshes with this and helps to secure it as a perpetually conserved site.
Yeah, I will note that there is a certifying body, the Green Burial Council, that certifies green burial cemeteries. And their highest level of rigor is a conservation burial. And we are seeking that, and those are our goals. And that does require that there be a conservation easement on top of the cemetery, either just the cemetery itself or the larger property. And so that is being pursued, helping, trying to help Eric with that. It's going along quite well with the North Coast Regional Land Trust, and they know what they're doing. There's a good possibility of that getting funded by the Resources Agency. And there will be a cemetery or Sacred Groves envelope inside of that conservation easement. And Dan Arismann, the executive director of North Coast Regional Land Trust, likes the idea, and has been suggested for probably almost every significant land trust has been approached to do this. And so we're kind of pioneering that in this area to integrate those things. So we believe the combination of a conservation easement and a cemetery will be the best possible perpetual land conservation that you could achieve. And so that's our goal. And, yeah, we really need that combination.
Well, great. Well, thanks for explaining this more about that, because I thought that was an important detail for us to consider.
Thank you. So I'm going to close the public hearing and bring us back to the Commission.
I have a couple of questions for staff.
Yes.
So through the chair to staff, and this is kind of an off-the-wall question, it's not related so much to the project, it's more related to, there's a group of five people that sit up here and talk about the budget of the county that's really low. I've been told that supposedly, cemeteries pull properties off the tax roll. So I just want to clarify, if this project was approved, would it pull all 550? Well, I guess, am I giving false information that cemeteries would pull properties off the tax roll? And if they are still on the, or are no longer on the tax roll, would it be the whole 550 acres?
That's not something we looked into. And I know cemeteries, when they're operated by a district, that's true. I'm sure that the fact that this would be put into a conservation easement would absolutely affect any tax value. It may, that may have the same effect.
I see the need for this project in this community. And even if it were to be in pass... and even if it were to be impacting the tax roll, it, it is, we need, we continuously have this resource that we need, and it seems like a good use of taking a property out of the tax roll. That's not really what's in front of us today anyways. So I feel good about supporting this project as proposed. I heard some concern about depth, and I'm curious to hear from you two whether or not you wanted to propose anything or your questions were answered. So I don't want to make a motion quite yet, but I'm in support of this project.
Commissioner Kurzey?
I have a question to staff of, is, kind of building off of the questions from Commissioner Scavdell, the, is, is it the role of the county to ensure that desecration doesn't happen? Or is that solely a liability of the property owner?
Well, we did consider the disturbance of human remains in the ISMND. That is, human remains are considered a cultural resource. So if you bury grandma somewhere, you want to be reasonably assured that her remains will stay where you put them. And her burial is a cultural practice, essentially. So that is why we applied the condition of approval on the utility easements. So if that utility easement were ever disturbed, we wouldn't be disturbing any potential grave sites. But beyond that, certainly I've heard from people that would be honored to be chewed on by a coyote, you know? So there's a full spectrum of people in terms of how, how they look at their, you know, remains. But I did do a pretty thorough internet review and found one instance in Florida of a sandy-soiled situation where perhaps there was a shallow grave, and coyotes may have disturbed remains. So we are potentially stepping into the unknown, but I feel like with the project conditions, we're reasonably assured that we won't have that impact occur.
I, I just want to tag on to that to say that it, it is the, I think it is the purview of the commission, because to approve the use permit, you do have to make findings relative to the public health, the safety and the general welfare. And so certainly if that was something that we thought there was gonna be a lot of bodies getting desecrated and just left strewn all over the property, I think that would be something where that might be hard to make that finding.
I would propose, and I don't, and I think if, I think if we're in the, first of all, I like this project, and I think it's a great site, and it's a beautiful piece of property. And I, and I can see, you know, people are gonna, you know, want to be there and, and use this site. And I think if you stay in that aerobic soil stratum, and let's say it's four feet deep, you should easily have twenty-four inches of cover over a single burial. And if you went a little bit deeper, even four foot six inches, you could have probably eighteen inches of cover over a stacked barrel, burial. So I would feel more comfortable. And then I think they would do some mounding over that to even get more depth, and that would be protected from wildlife and predators if we set those minimums. And I think it's within the guidelines that have been set by other green, green burial facilities around the country. So I've seen it as high as thirty inches of cover. But I would say twenty-four inches minimum on a single burial, and eighteen inches on a stacked burial should be, give us a factor of safety and mitigate that concern.
I'll just say, because this is a common concern, and I expect it would be a concern among our clients as well, that we could institute a practice of putting a wire mesh over the top of the mound, or just under the mound a little ways, until the gases that might attract an animal are absent, which would really just be a fairly short time. And then we could monitor that to see if that was attracting animals and, and, and take, take practices. So we would be just as concerned as anyone about desecration or digging up of these graves. So super undesirable, so we'd be all over it.
I'd like to ask the applicant a question, if that's okay?
Yeah, I think we've already allowed the applicant to speak, so sure, go ahead.
With the depths that Commissioner Scavdell is proposing in P, like the, how does the word, it, you're in your business model of how, like, would it change, would it be a detriment to the burial practice to put the bodies deeper in terms of how you're looking at the body biodegradings? Is the, the depth requirement that you're looking at and using part of how the best practices for the body to decompose, if that's a clear question?
Yeah, I guess I would answer that, one, by the fact that, that there's a very strong relationship between biological activity and depth. And the closer you get to the top or the topsoil, the more biologically active the system is. And inasmuch as we are trying to encourage decomposition, being too deep is a detriment. And then I would also suggest that this is something that probably should be looked at, not by laypersons, but by, say, the Department of Environmental Health, and we'd be happy to work with them, or the County Public Health Officer to, to take a look at this. I think we did get a question from Environmental Health of, you know, what should we do with, with animals when farmers bury animals? There's no regulation at all on that. Many of us bury our pets, of course, and there's no regulation there. So we could work with this. But I, I would be a little bit uncomfortable about modifying what the state requires just based on being uncomfortable with what, what the, what the statute requires, with recognition that the statute isn't specific about shrouds.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, not to be like, well, I guess everything's green burial, green burial, and then you say we'll put wire mesh over it. So I'm curious, how would that, that would, how would that keep it a green burial if you're placing a non-biodegradable material in the soil?
Yeah, we would remove that, sure, you know, once, once we're sure that the burial has, has proceeded. It could be, you could use a jute netting. If you tangled up the animal, I believe they would stop digging. So, but we haven't, we haven't investigated what would be the best way to do that.
Okay.
To your comment, I guess, is there anything more that we want to ask of the applicant before we bring him back to the commission?
I don't have any more questions, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
To your, your suggestion, I think I, I am also hesitant, I think, to ad hoc requirements in a field that I'm not well-versed in. But I hear your concerns, is there, like, would you be open to exploring, like, if disturbance were to occur? A condition that, like, didn't have a blanket depth requirement, but instead found another way to address your concerns?
Yeah, I'm just, again, in the operations report that was submitted by the applicant, it says across the United States, required burial depth can vary significantly. Some states have no statewide mandate, leaving the decision to individual cemeteries or local ordinances. For those that do have regulation, requirements often fall within the range of eighteen to twenty-four inches of cover. So even the applicant in their own operations report is telling us that eighteen to twenty-four inches of cover is pretty standard. So, but they're asking us to go to less than that, twelve to eighteen inches. And that seems like a conflict to me, it's like, like, asking for twelve, even though they're saying the depth can vary significantly, there's no statewide, it leaves it to individual cemeteries or local ordinances, us, to figure out what that should be. And those that do have regulations fall within the range of eighteen to twenty-four inches, which is all I was suggesting.
So, not to be debatable, but I will say, this commission, not saying this exact commission, many a times have added on-the-fly conditions to projects that they technically don't have expertise in. And my, that's my personal opinion. As far as the cover, eighteen to twenty-four is something I'm more comfortable with. I've dug a decent amount of graves, and they've encountered, people that I've dug graves for, for the pets, they've encountered issues when they are less than four feet deep. So I'm not an expert or anything like that, I'm just saying, I think it's a great project, I think it's a great idea. My, like, my first thing when I read through it, I'd say, what about a bear? Because there's, you know, that, that's my concern, is what about a bear? They, I've seen them dig up quite a few things at deep depths. Although septic tanks, technically only legally have to have twelve inches cover. So it's, it's not the off-gassing, it's more of the, the potential of the pets. So maybe if there was something they anchored over the grave for however long decomp takes in that time, I, I really don't know, that's, that's really where my concern is, and I want to make sure for health and safety of, you know, people and neighboring property owners, and not, you know, because that would be quite traumatizing of other people that their families have buried, and like, if something was exposed, that would be traumatizing. So those are where my concerns are, but also I'm fine with doing four-one or three-two. I mean, you have three votes to get it through, so. I think the project's great, it's just.
I do, too.
Well, so I, I think I generally agree with all of you. I think it's a great project, and, you know, I might be a little bit more comfortable if it, if it had a slightly greater amount of cover required. But I guess my question here is, for Chair Scavdell in particular, do you see, do you see a place in the conditions of approval that would sort of fit for attaching that specific condition? Because when really we're referencing the, the plan of operations, which, you know, kind of references depth in a number of places, right? So I, I guess what's the solution you're, you're, you're looking for here?
Yeah, the conditions of approval don't particularly address this. We'd have, I'd have to ask staff how we would, how we would do that. I think it's, you know, again, our local ordinance, if we're gonna approve a green burial site, and we want to set conditions, I'm sure we can, but.
So I, if that's a question to staff, I would just recommend that you add just a completely different condition to modify the project description, modify the depths that are identified in the project description to be what you feel comfortable with.
And when I looked at that, and I, I looked at the mitigated negative deck, I don't think we'd be doing anything that would change any of the findings of the environmental document by doing that.
If I could just say, we would be happy to dispense with the twelve-inch double burial requirement. But the double burials almost never happen simultaneously.
Right.
And then there's a lot of room out there, very low density burial, and so I.
Yeah, come up to the microphone, please, if you're, you're proposing, and I think I know where you're heading, so.
Can you repeat yourself?
We're fine with moving away from the twelve inch. There are several states that have a twelve inch requirement, by the way. So, and, and they don't have, they would have changed that if there was desecration going on, so. It is, it seems like this must happen, it, it doesn't seem to happen. And then I, I've worked a lot with Bob Wilson, who's this long-term gravedigger, and I've asked him a zillion questions, and he said, have you ever seen anything dug up? And he's never, never has. And I've participated in a number of green burials with him at Trinidad, and he really believes in green burial and goes with eighteen inches. And if it's a double burial, it goes deeper, actually.
Correct.
Yeah, or if they're.
To maintain the eighteen inches.
If the client wants it to be, have an option for a second burial in the same spot, he'll make it deeper so that the ultimate depth is eighteen inches, so, like, this much, yeah.
Yes.
So I guess, just to go back, is the, the, I miss, or the concern, I'm assuming, from the applicant is going too deep and getting into anaerobic situation. You want aerobic decomposition, so you get quick. So that, that's kind of where.
Correct, so we're, we're, it's sort of like fitting a house on a bluff between there and there.
So the applicant at one point had suggested working with the Department of Environmental Health, as maybe that could be another avenue versus specifying a depth. But I, I was, I was thinking that might be a good idea, but now I'm recognizing depths are already specified in the, in the staff reports. And now I'm feeling like we do need to actually state something.
The operation plan is proposing twelve to eighteen inches of cover. The applicant has, has suggested they'd be willing to go with eighteen inches of cover. They also suggested some sort of netting. I think, I, I think the netting or wire mesh kind of defeats the purpose a little bit of what, what we're trying to do with the natural burial, so.
I mean, he said it was, it was something temporary that would go on top.
I understand.
Okay.
No, I understand, yeah. And I'm not sure how it would work with a bear, anyway, but, and, and the whole idea of entanglement doesn't sound good to me either, of wildlife. So I would be willing to accept an eighteen inch minimum cover.
I heard the applicant say that they were amenable to eighteen inches. And did I see that staff maybe wanted to add something?
Yes, so the operations plan has gone through a few edits during the course of this project, and we analyzed a minimum burial depth of eighteen inches. And that's what's in the project description, and that's what'll be approved tonight. So what I would suggest is the applicant revise the operations plan, or make a condition such that the applicant revises their operations plan to specify a minimum burial depth of eighteen inches below ground surface. And I think that's, seems like that's acceptable to everybody, and that's essentially what we analyzed with the ISMND. So the twelve-inch double burial thing kind of slipped through the gate a little bit in terms of editing process of the operations plan. We did have this discussion with the applicant and talked about, you know, like, a temporary fencing section, chain link fence with pipe, and said, if there was evidence of disturbance. But I did not see evidence of exhumation of bodies by animals occurring. So I, I felt like eighteen inches would be sufficient.
I think, yeah, if, if we were to specify that that is a minimum of eighteen inches of cover for the burial. And I appreciate that the applicant brought up the answer to a question that I had thought but never asked, which is, if you do want to be able to do a, a double burial, which honestly I did not even know was a thing, you would sort of have to declare that in advance so that you could go deeper, so that it could be an option. Because in the normal course of, of burial depth, that probably would not be an option. So now that sort of explains that practice to me. But I, you know, given that eighteen inches is already the baseline that the, that the SEQA document used for its analysis, I'm comfortable with clarifying that that is the minimum cover that will be required.
And I'm, I'm comfortable with that as well, also with the understanding that at the, at the time of initial burial, that eighteen inches is depth of cover from the original ground surface?
Yeah.
And there'll be some mounding that would settle over time.
Yep.
Okay, I think we're getting there.
I'd be in support of that, the 18 inches from natural elevation.
Right.
But then also hopefully, uh, also when they're amending their, um, operations plan, that they also have a, a protocol written in, if, in the event that there is animal disturbance, as was said at the podium.
Yes, good point. Okay. Are we ready to entertain a motion?
Yes, but before we do, I just want to be, I, if I understood, um, the staff report, he, he, Andrew was saying that we should add a condition about the repayment of SEQA, of the fees associated with the SEQA, because that was, that was standard practice. I understood that, but that that would be charged to the applicant, but in this case, that wasn't done?
Yes, uh, we missed that condition in the conditions of approval.
Okay.
And so, we're asking that the commission add that commission, uh, add, add the payment of the SEQA filing fees, add the, um, development of a, um, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on project plan, uh, or site plan that shows the easement will be off limits from burials.
That was the other amended condition.
And if we want to clarify some more, we can add a condition that would specify the, uh, prior to commencing the project, the applicant will supply revised operations plan specifying minimum depth of burial, 18 inches below ground surface, and shall develop a protocol for animal disturbance, I think.
Good.
Thank you. Is that your motion?
Okay, well, sure, then I'll make that motion. Um, let me read the, the actual magic words. So, I move that we adopt the resolution, uh, attachment one, which does the following, adopts the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Sacred Groves Incorporated project pursuant to section 15074 of SEQA guidelines, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which is attachment 1B, and make all required findings for approval of the conditional use permit, and approve the Sacred Groves Incorporated conditional use permit as recommended by staff and subjected to the recommended conditions of approval, with the additional conditions noted that, um, payment of the SEQA filing fees will be added, and that the operations plan should be revised to specify a minimum of 18 inches of cover for each, below grade, um, for each burial. And finally, that the development plan, um, shall be amended to specify that deeded easements as well as streamside management areas and other, um, excluded areas should be not subject to the burial. You know what I'm trying to say?
I would second that, and just making sure I heard you, that it would also have a disturbance. Did you?
Yes, and that, yes, thank you, uh, for, I, in addition to specifying the burial depth, that the operations plan should also be amended to add a protocol in the event of bury, of grave site disturbance. Yes.
I would second that.
Whoever will call vote, please.
Give me just a moment.
Okay.
Who was second?
Mulder.
Commissioner Mulder.
Commissioner Curieazi.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder.
Yes.
Commissioner Levy.
Yes.
Commissioner Scavdall.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Want to say, um, Chair, that I, I really appreciated the, the depth of your looking into this and your, your, your questions, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, do we need another break? Are we okay?
We get a really fun presentation, don't we?
Yeah. So, no items pulled from consent. I asked you. I was asked for it. I got uncomfortable with that a couple times, so.
Sure. Yeah, you can leave.
Okay, Director Ford, I guess we'll, uh, move on to the presentation on ex parte risk and ethical boundaries in a digital world.
Yes.
How exciting. Oh, okay. As long as we're not in it, I'm fine.
Not every day they want to take a picture.
No. I've got it in display mode. I don't understand why it's not.
If this slide doesn't work, would it get postponed to another meeting, or what, what would we do there?
I can run through it. It's not that.
We'll, we'll run through it and just see what comes up.
Yeah, cause you can still go to the next slide. It's just not displaying quite as large, right, or?
It's not moving with me.
Oh, it's not moving at all. Hmm.
Laura, you also have it, if it's.
I do also have it, yes.
Hey. Is that you, Laura?
That is me.
Okay, we'll just do it like that then. Hi, I'm Destiny Walaska. You guys see me here a lot. I am the Planning Commission Attorney. I am the Land Use Environmental Attorney for the County of Humboldt in general. So, today we're gonna be talking about online research and social media. Um, I think social media is the forum in which I discuss this, but I'm really talking not just about social media. I'm talking about like AI, I'm talking Google, I'm talking anything you do that's research beyond just social media. And when I talk about social media, I'm also talking about a broad spectrum of social media. I think most people think about the meta platforms, but there's many other platforms, um, you know, even local platforms such as like Lost Coast Outpost and things like that, where commentary is shared. So, um, let's dive into it. Next page. So, ex parte, um, it means from one party. So, we have standing principles in law, which basically says that you're not allowed to hear commentary from one party and not the other due to the idea that it is unfair. Um, and it's without the benefit of others' presence. Most of the time, at least how I think about this as a lawyer, is, you know, a plaintiff cannot talk to a judge without the defendant being there. But that's not how we're sitting at the Planning Commission in this role. You guys are the judges and the public is a party, and then the applicant is a party. Therefore, you cannot talk outside the presence of both these people. Otherwise, you violate what's called ex parte. Ex parte can be cured, which is what these disclosures are at the beginning of the meeting, which is if you hear information from one party, the public at large, or from an applicant, you should disclose that matter as thoroughly as possible. These processes have dated back to the Magna Carta, that's the 1200s, and then the US Constitution. That's where you get the right to confront one's witnesses, due process, notice requirements that are all in the Bill of Rights to ensure that we have fair tribunals. This was then found in California Constitution in the case law in 1945, talking about administrative tribunals, which is you guys, Planning Commission, outside of the judiciary capacity, which means that they're not allowed to act on their own information, and they cannot be treating things as evidence which has not been introduced as such. So, in today's world, what does ex parte communication mean? It's a lot of digital communication. It's communicating anything from posts, likes, comments, shares, and even passive scrolling. Even today, uh, researching green burials are, and then adding things into the record afterwards. Those are all ex parte information, that you're learning outside information that's not part of the record. So, social media platforms routinely expose commissioners to extra record information, and that parties cannot rebut, and so that violates the core process of procedural fairness. It's the idea that you have the right to confront, and you have the right to rebut. If it's not in the record, you don't have that opportunity. Next slide. So, in a lot of capacities, when you sit in a quasi judicial decision maker, you're not really an advocate and you're not really an investigator. You're trying to make a decision, but it's supposed to be impartial and unbiased. There are some times that we, um, like an investigative role. I think like our Planning Commission roles encourage site visits and such. But, and a lot of times, you guys really shouldn't be acting in that capacity, and if you do, again, there's an ex parte violation, and that's what ex parte is. It's a presumption of a violation unless it's cured dutifully. So, again, start with the presumption. If I'm doing something outside, I'm basing my decision off of something not in the record, that's a violation. I have to cure it. How can I cure it? I can put it in the record. So, quasi judicial things are variances, conditional use permits, special permits, subdivision map. Oh, I did variances twice. That's okay. I was tired when I wrote this. So, those are things you hear today. Usually, those are things that we hear the first Thursday of the month. Things that are legislative, zoning code amendments, ordinances, general plan updates, that are not site specific, cause sometimes we do have very site-specific ones, are legislative, and they don't have the same, um, due process implications as do quasi judicial projects. Um, and that has to do with the idea of, um, again, going back to the Constitution, denial of due process on property law. When it's an individual property, then you're thinking about that and not as property or as a community as a whole. Social media in general blurs those boundaries between public engagement and private influence, and so, um, we try and demand digital neutrality. So, any communication, so what's an ex parte communication? Is any communication about a pending matter that occurs outside a hearing and involving only one side? And communication has been defined, uh, defined pretty, pretty broadly. It's, uh, not just communication, um, that maybe you're talking about, and ex parte can also include, um, like, any sensory information, really. So, if you go on a site visit and you hear things, you say, oh, I heard an owl, or you smell something, or I heard rushing water. Those are also ex parte communications, things that other commissioners maybe did not have that are not in the record. So, it's, it's, it's pretty broad what it is. It's, do you have information that others do not have? And if it is, it needs to be disclosed. So, in the context of social media, this is reading posts about, or comments on a project. It's liking or reacting to content. It's following applicants or opposition groups. It's sharing or posting project-related material. So, yeah, obviously, if you heart something, it's a pretty strong sign of advocacy. But even reading posts and reading comments, if you're starting to make decisions on that, um, can get you into hot water. Um, there.
So, can I ask a question? So, where this comes up is, um, we're all probably members of some social media groups. And a lot of them are neighborhood-related groups. Like, I'm sure there's one in Southern Humboldt or Garberville. It's like there's one in Ferndale and Mad River, right? And apparently, there's one in McKinleville. So, we're, those are, like, we're, I'm a member of the Mad River Watch because I need to know if Highway 36 is open so I can get up to my house, right?
Yep.
And that's where it's first posted. But if there's a project up there, which could be coming before us, somebody might post something on there about that project, and I would read it. Cause I'm reading, cause it's gonna come in on my feet. So, am I supposed to, what, close my eyes or disclose that, or?
It depends.
Okay.
It really depends. Um, one, does that, there's a couple of different situations, right? Because digital world is like really funny, and I kind of think of some of this in my post, are you friends with that person? Are they, is it popping up for some reason? Is, are you changing the algorithm in some way, right? The main thing is, if you're not liking, hearting, sharing, reposting in some way, not actually engaging, if you're just passively seeing it. Is it a substantive comment, or is it a comment that just expresses, um, approval or disapproval, right? You're like, I like this project, I dislike this project. This probably doesn't need to be disclosed in the record. But if it says, I drove past on such and such date, and I saw trash accumulation on the side of the road, and then you want to come here as a commissioner and say, I heard around town, there's trash accumulation on the side of the road. That's a denial of due process to the applicant, to whoever, because they didn't have the benefit of seeing that post. So, the way to correct that would to be share a print-off of the post in its entirety, not just the comment that you are basing your decision on, that substantive comment, and put it into the record. So, again, it depends. If a bunch of people are saying, I like it, and you're just like, oh, people like it, or people dislike it, that's your job as a commissioner, is to respond to your contentious issuance. But if you start getting down into nitty gritty information, things that you're basing your decision on, things that are helping you shape the formation of what you think the project is, and that really should be in the record.
Sorry, follow-up question here, because I might have misheard you. It would be okay, say there's a hypothetical, uh, next, uh, meeting. Project A is up, and there's a post, and I, I read something that has 100 likes, positives, and say 25 downs, and I base my decision by those ups and downs. Is that something I don't have to ex parte, or I do need to ex parte, cause I'm a little confused by that?
Well, there's, uh, ex parte is a continuum, right? Um, so, do you need to share the post? Probably not. But do you need to say, yeah, I was online and I saw something, and there is multiple likes and dislikes? You don't need to count the number, anything like that. That's probably okay. I mean, we hear all the time, the porter supervisor, I was contacted by so-and-so, or a bunch of constituents have reached out to me, and just say, I've heard from people in the neighborhood. Um, that's okay to base your decision on. I, I would say it, probably. I'd still disclose it. I don't think you need to print it out and put it in the record, per se, because it's not that strong. I would caution doing that, just as a commissioner, um, just in the sense of, I don't, some of these neighborhood sites and things like that have people who are no longer in county, and so, when we base SEQA decisions, um, and things like that, um, when we look at what constitutes substantial evidence, one of the things that we look at is, one, whether they're an expert in the field. So, if it's about a fire-related topic, we look to certain, um, fire regulators and fire, fire association. The second thing we look for substantial evidence is neighbors, uh, because they see it every day, um, and community members. And if they're not in the community and they're not seeing it every day, then it's hard to say that they actually know what's going on at that point in time, so.
So, what I, I just want to clarify, what I heard you say is, don't base your decision only by what you see on social media.
That is what I'm saying, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide. So, yep, this is kind of summarizing what I said, um, which is just reading posts, liking, reacting. There's all different ways to engage in things now, thumbs upping, thumbs down, Reddit, I, you know, TikTok, whatever your, your choice of social media is. Next slide. So, again, I want to start with the fact that expartes are immediately like, uh, ex parte communication is immediately a violation. It's a presumption of unfairness, and then the only thing you can do is cure it. Um, so, again, curing, complete, detailed, timely, disclosure must occur before the hearing begins. That's really, um, before the staff report is giving, um, if I'm being completely honest. And then, the more complex, like I said, the information is, the more notice. So, um, we've had commissioners before who have relied on maybe like CDFW reports that weren't in the record, but those contain highly scientific, technical information. Um, giving a disclosure at the dais is probably not going to be adequate. Putting the information in the staff report in advance so that the applicant and public have opportunity to read, review, and understand the information that the commissioner is basing their decision on would be better. So, I. So I can't give you a firm time to say, I can actually give you a firm time of when not to say it after the hearing begins. But in terms of like when I, should I give it that, you know, the more complex, the more detailed, the sooner the better. So if you see it, you engage with it, disclose it. What that disclosure is, how in-depth that disclosure is, again, it's a continuum.
So current examples, so tonight, when I referenced this operations report and there was this health and safety code in there, and it says California Health, you know, 8113, whatever it is. And in one part of the operation report, it says the code says this, and then farther on in the operation report, it says the code says something else. I said, "Well, that's weird. The document that I'm given is telling us that this code says two different things in the same document." So I looked up the code. So I should have disclosed that and provided that, copied that code to everybody?
Code is a little bit different.
Okay.
Because we take judicial notice of codes. If you wanted outside information, like things I could have told you, which is, you know, the California, you know, Funeral Bureau has actually published their own guidebook and the guidebook says
Right, okay.
That they recognize 18 inches is fine for natural bureaus as well. That would be, the guidebook itself
Right.
That they issued would be extra record.
Yeah, okay.
And we'd want that, we'd want you to put that in, say you found that yourself. We'd want you to put that in, in advance so that the applicant, which we always think of the applicant, but the public law also appeals, right? They are also our other party, have the opportunity to review and say whether or not they agree with it. But the codes themselves, they are
They are what they are.
They are judicially noticed.
Yeah, okay. Dodge the bullet.
Next slide. So I'm not going to get into crazy algorithms because I am barely technical, but if you know anything about Meta or TikTok or any of the other platforms, the more you engage with certain type of posts, the more they are going to push them. And so it would also be wise, as a commissioner, not just to not engage with, say, a project, but particular types of projects, like projects that are within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, certain that lean one way or the other. So if you have, you start liking a lot of pro-development content, you won't get content that talks about habitat conservation, because the algorithms that social media train, train you to only see than pro-development content. So it's just something to be conscious of, because you can create this unintentional exposure to one-sided narratives and then develop a bias unintentionally, which we've seen before. So Break Zone versus Billards, is that bias must be significant to impair partiality? That's one case. My favorite case is NASHA versus City of Los Angeles. It came out in 2004. I think it is just such a good case, well, it's not good for the Planning Commissioner, but it's such a good case. It's not necessarily about social media, but he was part of a Planning Commission that heard a project where a gas station was to go in at the end of the neighborhood. He lived in the neighborhood, but he lived in the far back of the neighborhood, not at the front of the neighborhood. So he was outside of the radius, that would require recusal. And so he voted on the project and he voted like negatively on the project, and the project still went through. And then there was an appeal to the Board of Supervisors, and he wrote a newsletter, he anonymously penned it, so he didn't put his name, he didn't say that I was a Planning Commissioner or anything like that. He just wrote a name anonymous and he distributed it to the public and the neighbors. Anyway, it came back, that it was him, and the court invalidated the whole decision because it showed that he had bias. So even though he wasn't using his Planning Commissioner name to try and get across a point, engaging with these things and then trying to persuade the public, even after the Planning Commission had made a decision, and it was at the board level, then became a violation. And so there are these things that you give up being a Planning Commissioner. I too give up as being an attorney for the Planning Commission, in terms of what your advocacy can be on certain projects, especially how they impact you directly. So in terms of social media, you know, I've heard of other cases where maybe people made fake accounts that didn't share their name and started liking and disliking content because they didn't want to use their public profile name or their public personality name and started liking and disliking content. And that is still can be used to show bias, if you start engaging in that content, even though you're not using your, you know, your given Planning Commissioner names, the fact that you're interacting with that and developing a bias is, is going to be an issue.
Yes. Commissioner West has a question.
So I think following what you're saying, I'm just trying to draw the line of like, isn't you making a decision on the bias, like demonstrating a bias, on the dais, demonstrating a bias, so that after the fact, like you do have an opinion? Like you're supposed to consider all the information and stay neutral, but then you do vote one way or another, doesn't that, I think for me, I'm getting trapped up on the, after the fact, you're still not supposed to advocate for a project part.
Yeah, you have to take a neutral position of advocacy. You voted on a project and once it's at the board level, and even actually while it's pending on appeal, you're not really supposed to be taking a position at all.
If it goes
Yeah, so if you have something here and you vote on it and it's, it does not get appealed, the time to appeal has run and you want to talk about the project, that's probably fine, unless it comes back for modification and then you're going to have to recuse yourself and
Okay.
So it's hard to talk about things within your jurisdiction because you don't, you don't know when it's going to come back. We have revocations, we have modifications, we have all sorts of things. And if you start making public content about why you like or dislike this project, it can create the perception of bias.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
But just to be clear, you can state factual things that are, if you aren't leaning one way or another, you can, I believe, you can still go before the board and state factual things or like not advocating one or, one way or the other. So I just, I, I've seen things happen where there's comments, and I know myself, I've commented at the next level, but not for or against, just more factual types of things.
Well, it's complicated, because everyone has a different version of facts. That's the whole reason we have a jury. They're what we call our fact finders, which we don't have the benefit of in these sorts If you voted on it, it's, it's a, it's better policy to not make a comment on it later. If you feel strongly one way or the other, we can't stop you, we just advise you.
But if somebody, so an applicant appeals our decisions into the Board of Supervisors, we shouldn't appear to, to appear there, appear there to explain our position.
Yeah, and the case honestly even says you're not really supposed to be talking to like the supervisor behind
Right, right.
And giving additional information behind. If you're saying something, like I've seen you maybe say something like what the Planning Commission has said, that's a public knowledge, because now it's a publicly posted sort of video and it's on the, it is on the record, it's on the record because the commission happenings itself is, is the record. But going sort of beyond those sorts of things is where we get into like murky waters.
Can I build off that a bit more in terms of not advocating for a project? Or, I guess I was always in the impression that once a vote, it's kind of similar to Commissioner West, once a vote had happened, then you're kind of more free to talk about it. So I'm kind of curious if, if in your opinion, even talking about it to people that you run into who might ask you about your decision, even if it aligns with everything you said on the dais, it's sounding like you should refrain from that in general.
The NASHA case that talked about this, which is the case in which they found a Planning Commissioner had violated their duty by advocating between the interstitial period, which is a little bit bad, I have a slide on it. The interstitial period is like the period between when the Planning Commission adopts or approves something and when the board takes up an item. You're not really supposed to be talking about it, because the final action is not done. When we talk about finality of an action, it's done when either an appeal period has exhausted itself and they have not sought appeal, or the board has taken up an appeal and made a decision. And there's nothing left else after, they've been exhausted administrative remedies. So it's not my suggestion, you, our appeal period is not very long, it's only, what, like 30 days? So you'll know pretty quickly whether or not. And again, I would still caution, if it's a hot topic project, that seems like it's going to have a lot of modifications or something like that, to talk about it diligently or in certain capacities. Again, advocacy is different, and I think that's what Commissioner Mulder was getting at. If you're talking about what you think is facts or platform or something like that, that's again, something you guys are like respectively allowed to do, especially as it relates to maybe bigger projects that have community-wide impacts, it's a continuum. If it's a specific project, you're starting to advocate for denial, revocation, things like that, that's when you start getting into that bias zone. Okay, next slide. Next slide. So I just listed a couple of things, Facebook, X, LinkedIn, Instagram, TikTok, Threads, Nextdoor, Lost Coast Outpost. LinkedIn actually has an interesting case coming up, I actually just read the other day, where a prosecutor was researching jurors using their LinkedIn profile, and they considered it ex parte communication, because when you look at someone's profile on LinkedIn, it notifies them that they've had a view. So again, how are you interacting? Does not need to be, "Oh, I love this project or don't love this project." It can be very minute interactions on social media. Nextdoor, of course, Lost Coast Outpost has a commentary section, Red-Headed Black Belt, there is many others, Ring, Neighbors, Citizen App, YouTube, Reddit, what, you know, all of these different platforms. Google has platform, Google runs AI in the background, so does Copilot and other things, which brings up commentary from other people, so, and integrates it into an answer back to you. So there are risks everywhere online, which is why you have to be dutiful in either disclosing, avoiding, whatever.
So in the case of like the McKinleyville Town, I didn't make a decision on, I was not, I did not participate in this position so far, McKinleyville Town Center, but I am a part of the group, the Facebook group that was like discussing it.
Yeah.
And I think it's come to mind, like, that group had a lot of, majority of the opinions that you see in that group were swaying one way, and so now I'm wondering, is even membership in that group possibly displaying some sort of bias?
If that was a particular project, I would have recommended that you recuse.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been another hot topic. A lot of these cases are coming under the judiciary right now.
Yeah.
In the terms of like how judges and prosecutors, and then it'll trickle down to us and administrative tribunals later. Yes, McKinleyville Town Center though was a legislative project, so. Due process is a little bit different in terms of ex parte. We're expecting with community-wide impact projects like that, that you're engaging with the community in a different way.
Okay.
Interesting. So this project that we saw tonight, which probably has some sort of member page or
This is a site-specific project though.
Group forum or whatever, if we, yeah. So if we were part of that, we would have to recuse ourselves.
Or try and download the whole group page information, which I worked in litigation capacity before this, and it's not easy to do that.
Yeah, okay, interesting.
You know, I know you're still getting through your presentation, so I don't want to jump the gun, but I'm, I am curious to come back to the question a little bit more of research, you know? And maybe you're going to get to that, like we've, because I thought it was actually an instructive case tonight. You know, you looked up the code, the code was referenced, that code is kind of, we're all on notice that the code is relevant. But you might have, or I might have, or any of us might have, for this type of a project, gone looking out, you know, like, "We don't have any precedent for this, we haven't done any, what are the questions I should be asking?" And then that would lead me or others potentially to looking for cases in other jurisdictions, looking for green burial, best practices guides, things like that. I guess what I'm not perfectly clear on is if that sort of research is just discouraged in a judicial, quasi judicial context, I know it's different for legislative, or if that's kind of part of the job, but we need to do a more diligent job, if we do it, of disclosing upfront what we learned from that research.
So the perspective we've taken as a group, and by group, I mean the county council's office, is it's discouraged to a point, right? If you know a lot about the information, just ask staff, and the staff can find it and staff can put it in the record. Something like green burials where it's, it's a relatively new topic, you guys find things very interesting, staff can only put so much in and you're going to want to do your own digging, that's fine, that's an extenuating circumstance. I mean, we've had other projects like that as well, where we've had hydroponic farms or something that's a little bit different than what we would normally see here and have familiarity with. I've also seen it with like decibels, when they've talked about sound barriers and different things that have created, when you start getting into these levels of expertise and then you're on the dais saying, "I read something online that says we, a great sound barrier are haystacks at the turn of the racetrack." Then we're going to say, "What substantiates that?" What, you're just saying that, I'm sure you've heard of hearsay, is that one of the things that we bring up a lot in law. Someone's going to say, "That's hearsay," right? But that's not how we say it here, right? And then they're going to want to substantiate that, they're going to want to see it and say whether or not it's true, because maybe they don't think haystacks are going to help. Maybe they think that a plastic barrier is going to work better. And unless you have that research in front of you that you're now saying, "I want to impose this condition because I read this," it's not really fair to the applicant and it's not really fair to the public for you to bring this new condition or make your decision on a substantive based off of something that they do not have access to. So if you want to use it, that's fine, but then you need to print it and give it to staff.
So that, that's what I think, yeah, you're, you're leading up to that point, is that if you're going to do, if you've done some research that affects in any way your judgment about how you might vote or what you think of the project or how to mitigate it better, really the thing to do is to get that to you, to the clerk, in, I guess to the clerk or, you know, essentially submitted as, as any other comment would be submitted in writing and say, "This is what I found when I looked into this topic."
Not, as any other comment should be submitted.
Okay, so not, okay, so not then through the normal public comment. What, what is the best way to cure that in advance?
When you guys get your briefs, we have one of two options. If you find something really late, then it may lead to a continuance. That's part of the reason that we've discouraged it in the past, is something has fallen on a commissioner's lap within 24 hours of the hearing, and then we want to put it in the record, but we don't have time to get it to the public.
Right.
Right? And then it becomes an issue, because we spent all this time and resources trying to notice a hearing, that we now have to push back because there's now additional information to put into the record, which in some cases is warranted, right? Like there's certain information that you cannot look away. You should send it to Laura, and Laura will direct it to the planner that is associated with the project, and the planner associated with the project can either send it to John, I don't, I don't need to say it.
Yeah, I'd be really careful with that.
Yeah.
Because the struggle you're going to have is if you send it to Laura, she may not understand the significance of it, and so it may die there. Whereas if it was elevated to the planner, to the supervising planner, to me, it's like, "Oh, my gosh, we don't have the ability to respond to this right now, and we need to continue it before we ever get to the hearing." And that's one of the reasons where it gets, it's a fine line of doing research and trying to throw information into the record, because not all information is universally accepted. And, and so that becomes part of the problem without giving staff the opportunity. And, and so that becomes part of the problem without giving staff the opportunity to really research it and determine whether or not it has validity or not. It puts us then in an awkward place too, because we may be trying to respond to things on the fly, and I'll just say, that's a really uncomfortable place to be, especially if it has implications to findings for the project, and adjusting findings, adjusting the rationale for why decisions are being made, and even more significantly modifying conditions. And that's completely ignoring the fact that the applicant hasn't had a chance to roll over backwards and say, what are you trying to do to me? And I'm, exaggeration for effect there. But also the public, the public may feel confident with where things are at, and suddenly there's this curve that comes in, and now they don't understand what happened.
And I'd really stress the public part too, because I think a lot of times we think about the applicant when we're thinking about affording due process. It is very difficult, even as the planning clerk, to get new information and append it to the agenda once it's already been posted, and that happens seventy-two hours after, right? That's why we get these supplemental comments on the tables, because these things are rolling in last minute that we can't upload quick enough for the public to have access to them. And so in those situations, then we have to broadcast it on the TV so the public has access to them, but like is it, if it's a simple picture, right? Maybe it's something you can broadcast and say, I took this picture, X, Y, Z. But if it's a major report, we'd have to scroll through it, read it, are we really affording due process? Again, not to the applicant, who the planner could probably email it over to and say, read this, what do you think? But also the public, because that's, our job is to them as well.
So just really quickly to, like, I hear completely what you're saying about like not, like, when you're doing your own research. Like, for example, but I think on my mind is the example of today where the applicant, I think emailed all of us individually, and then I think that my process was to forward it to John, Laura, and the planning clerk. Was that like the desired group of people to, yeah, when you get an email to, okay, just wanted to make sure that that was the appropriate path?
One of the things we saw today was Commissioner Skedall, who went and looked at codes that were cited in the document. Everybody has access to that. So if, if they give you a path, if the submitted document gives you a path and it's embedded in the document, you're free to do that.
Yeah, same with if they put links and they say, oh, this Florida burial place is so great, look at this link, right? Then you can look at the link and it's totally fine, that's not actual record, that's embedded within. Okay. So, oh, this is the next page, just kind of talking about that independent investigation, which is Googling project details, watching YouTube videos, reading Reddit threads, browsing Instagram, TikTok. So in practice, we have, we collectively have not been great about our disclosure timing, and then the completeness of our disclosures, and that really undermines the fairness of the process. Something I also want to say is like reviewing the applicant's website, especially if that's not part of the record. I've seen a few times where we get interested in a project and we start Googling from the dais, and that is not permissible. That's, again, if you want that to be part of, because it's probably pretty beneficial for us to be basing our decision on based off of what they're advertising or putting out there into the world of online research, just email and say, I think this should be part of the record, and then we can make it part of the record. It's not too difficult to do, but when we start Googling off the dais, it doesn't give everyone an opportunity. And I've also seen it where after we've even closed public comment, then we start trying to think about things in different ways. What are an appropriate decibel limit? What is the right speed limit for this area? And I've read this that says, you know, sixty decibels sounds like a car horn if you're a hundred feet away, and it's like, well, where are you getting that information? Does the applicant and public have a chance to rebut it? If they don't, then you really shouldn't be basing your decision off of that. Which again, if you want those things, if you think you need more information, and I want to always caveat this, this is your job as commissioner, if there is something that you really feel you truly need to make your decision off of, and it's not in the record, and you feel like you need more additional time research, you need to ask for a continuance so we can put that information into the record.
I'll just say, I was not that close tonight with the cemetery of suggesting that, because it seemed like there was a point there where there wasn't enough information to really make a decision. And so I was going to offer that we would go and do the research. And I know Andrew did a lot of research, so I don't want to take anything away from what he did. He reflected that he did that, but perhaps we didn't package it in a way that was concrete enough, perhaps we could have been more expansive in what we presented. So sometimes if the information's not there, it would be better to, to ask for that continuance.
Especially if the applicant or member of the public are opposed to a new condition you're imposing. I also like to assess things in terms of like what is legal, which I'm going to tell you what is legal, but like let's also assess things in terms of risk. So if you're imposing a new condition at the last moment that an applicant does not like, is not a fan of, based off of information you're Googling on the dais, that is a far higher risk for us than if they are amenable to something, and they're offering to do it themselves without the need for us to substantiate that evidence later in a court of law. So, next record. This is the interstitial period, our next slide. We kind of already talked about this, this is the period between the hearing closure and the final decision. So during this time, you try and avoid reading new posts and comments on the matter and accepting new information and engaging in conversations and digital interactions about them. If you, the appeals go into the board and you hard a post, that can be construed the wrong way. And again, best practice is refraining from it, there are exceptions, clarifying questions to staff. This is all very best practice. Again, it's a continuum, it's context-dependent. If you receive new information, if you receive new information that's not in the packet, then disclose it. Okay, next page. So if you accidentally see or engage with ex parte content, you need to notify all parties. Again, I've been trying to define to you that parties is not just applicant, it is the public, which is a harder, more amalgamous party. Share the substance or the source, and allow time for response or rebuttal. Okay, next question. So here's some digital ethics questions. Are you friends or followers with someone that is appearing before you? Have you read a post or a comment on the pending matter? Are you liking sharing or posting content about a project? Have you conducted independent research via social media or otherwise? Have you taken a position publicly or even passively? And again, this is all a continuum. I'm going to say that. If you're on a campaign and you make certain statements related to a campaign, there are exceptions for that, which we can get into if need be.
Can you elaborate, with this, we're a small community in the county, can you elaborate a little bit more with friends or followers with someone appearing before you and how that relates to ex parte?
I think Commissioner Levy did a pretty good job today. He said, I've known so-and-so for X amount of years, I've worked with him, I've had collegial and maybe even personal relationship in some capacity with him. I don't, he said, I don't think it affects my decision-making capacity. Are they your best friend? You probably should recuse, right? So it's a continuum. I think you did a good job of your ex parte today. If they're a friend on Facebook and you have three hundred friends and your profile's set to private, it's probably need, a more need for disclosure than if you're a public figure and they are following you, and you have thousands of people in the community following you in your public sort of capacity.
And, and so that includes like if, if, beyond, like, would you also include like, if there's, like, beyond knowing the applicant, if there's a public comment letter that comes in, or if, like, sometimes there are agencies that provide comment, and like if you know the staff member that wrote that letter from the agency, are those also appropriate times to disclose that you have relationships with those people?
I guess it depends the capacity and what you know them. If it's professional or something like that, I think, again, we're a small community, we've all passed each other. Are they your best friend? Are you going to afford more weight to that specific comment because of your personal relationship with them? If you are, then maybe yes, even if it's in like a, even if it's in a professional capacity, not a personal capacity, say you've worked with them for thirty years and you think they're the best engineer that you've ever met, you might want to disclose that because you're going to give more weight to that report than maybe you would from a report from someone else. So it kind of all depends back on like, are you making your decision based off of that information? So, next slide. So our Humboldt County rules, we really encourage site visits, that's something that is unique to Humboldt County, actually. Most counties discourage ex parte altogether, but we really like the idea that you guys get out there and see the site for yourself. When you're out there and you're talking to the applicant, you need to describe not only your communications with the applicant insofar as any information you receive from them is not in the record, and then summarize your sensory observations, and then you cannot discuss your voting intentions, you can't say, I really think this is a great project, cannot wait to vote yes on it. That would be pretty bad, so don't do that. So in terms of timing, it needs to happen after the chair announces the item and before the staff presentation. It should not be after the staff presentation, it should be really first thing. And then obviously, like I said, it's a continuum, so the earlier the disclosure may be for more complex or influential content. Social media exposure counts, so.
So should I be routinely calling for ex parte disclosure before staff? Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yes. Previous chairs, and I've seen the board do it, we've gone off and on, waxing the lane in terms of saying ex parte's are now. But yes, I think it's a great reminder for everyone because we forget.
I'm sure Sarah will do a better job.
She's tired. Me too. Next, uh, next slide. Oh, wait, sorry, sorry. So these are just the consequences. Again, it's a continuum, like how bad is the ex parte? So the Nausicaä case, like I said, he, he penned the newsletter that he sent out anonymously that said, change the decision, the gas station's so bad, this is a blight to our neighborhood. So it showed a lot of actual bias, and so there was personal liability as well as voiding the decision. It could be something as much as like, just a little slap on the wrist saying, don't do that again, and that was bad, but it didn't really ultimately affect the, the final decision-making, right? But I, it's hard to say, because we don't see these things. I will say, a lot of these cases are based off of what's in the record, an actual bias. So perception of bias is one thing, and actual bias is another. If you're going to face true, like, legal consequences in terms of voiding a decision or personal liability, it's actual bias. In terms of like loss of public trust or something like that, that's just perception of bias, and we advise you guys not to do that, but there's no, there's not really a legal consequence to that. So again, they're not just best practices, they're legal safeguards. I promptly disclose and cure any ex parte exposures, especially in the digital realm. Okay, there's some, next page is our final guidance. Avoid social media engagement on pending matters. If exposed to substantive content, disclose it, submit it, allow rebuttal. Do not conduct independent research, even online. And that line is really meant to say, and if you do, put it in the staff report, maintain neutrality until all evidence is presented. So that's a big one that I didn't maybe explain today. So if you're talking a lot with the applicant and getting ex parte, and you do plan on disclosing it, you're planning on carrying it, you should not come to a decision on what you should think you should do until you see all things, and all things also includes public comment, which may roll in up until the very last second of the hearing, as we've seen public comment up here. So if anyway you start feeling swayed, and not open to changing your mind based off of public comment, that is not really permissible. And then when you're in doubt, consult me. And honestly, if anything that you take away from this presentation is not that you know the rules, because we don't know the rules even, and we're lawyers, and they're always changing, and they're new and complex, it's if you have a question, just contact us and we will help guide you to the right place.
So question in terms of, you've mentioned maybe printing out a forum discussion or something that may have influenced a decision. Is that, the people that commented there may not be aware that that, is that considered public? The fact that it's put online, it's public, so they should be understanding that if they're going to make a comment in a forum, even if it's a membership forum, that that is public and could be submitted publicly in a, in a situation like this?
A membership forum being like you're a member of a group or something like that?
Right, like the, there was the example of the McKinleyville Town Center.
I would hope that they understand that if they're posting something online, that they're posting something publicly. It's going to be weird if it's a private Facebook profile and a private, in a private group setting where that's not part of a member, it's just you with two private friends, more complicated, but I will let you know, I, none of your digital footprint is safe, not even your text messages.
Yeah, it almost seems like more of a, because it is like the example of, I think, McKinleyville Neighborhood Group, they are a private group, and I think it's more of a breach of trust of you as a group member within the group than it is something else. What I've learned is that I should get off of groups.
That was my last slide, so if there's any other questions, I welcome it, and if not, that's okay too.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to ask a more direct question. If a decision was made, but you weren't technically part of the voting party, and you followed that decision on to the next level, that would not discredit the vote because you weren't part of the vote, is that correct or incorrect?
I'm going to rephrase your question to make sure I understand. You're wanting to make a public comment, but you were not part of the yes vote, or you abstained?
I was not part of, I wasn't on the dais.
But in that hypothetical, did you just miss the meeting, but you were part of the body at that time?
Correct.
Okay.
I guess it depends. It depends. If you needed, if you would have needed formal recusal, then we would have suggested you do like a formal recusal in writing, because certain times in formal recusals, you have to state the reason for recusal. If you didn't need a formal recusal, you could probably talk about it.
I dismissed the meeting.
Okay.
Which again, I want to also clarify, if you formally recuse, you can talk about the project all you want. You've seen me recuse before because my husband's made comments to the commission, and I just walk off.
Thank you. I, every time you do these presentations, I, it's incredibly helpful, so thank you for taking the time to put it together.
And complex, yeah. Sometimes I feel like we're just supposed to close our eyes and listen and decide, but I can't do that. We have to do our, I think this, this commission does a pretty good job doing our homework with the staff reports and information we're given to us. It's just a matter of remembering to, if we have questions, go back to staff first, I think that's probably, and even ask them to do the research, like, hey, I have a lot of questions about this, can you do, can you provide more information on green burials or some background information or, so, you can go that way.
Can I actually just ask one more question? Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but
No, go ahead.
But before we leave the topic. When I think about the times that I've tended to do research online or otherwise, and it probably is online, it, it is usually tied to our legislative efforts. Not always, and this, you know, green burial thing was a good example of something that I might have researched into on a particular project. But I just wanted to come back to that and ask if it is, let's say, the short-term rental ordinance or any number of ordinances that we've worked on and developed. What guidelines, if any, apply to disclosing what we may learn in doing research? And again, I don't even mean talking to individuals in the community. I just mean like looking up other jurisdictions ordinances on this topic. That's something I've done a lot, you know, just to sort of get ideas of what it could look like. Is that something that we, A, shouldn't do? Or if we, for a legislative project, or if we do do it, should we feel bound to disclose the specific information that we looked into and got from that research in the way that we would for a quasi judicial?
Definitely not in the same way that you would do for a quasi judicial. If it's something you're ultimately pinning your hat on and you're trying to sway someone, I would put it in there as best practice, but it's probably not even necessary in terms of avoiding like a legal quandary at that point. So in the courts, when they look at projects for legislative platforms, they just give deference to community makers because they say the community makers are, and the decision makers within the community are best at knowing what's best for the community. And they afford a different way to quasi judicial projects. It's whether or not there is substantial evidence to support the findings that you are making. And if you do not have substantial evidence, that is a challengeable offense. And substantial evidence means if, are you imposing, it's not just on a project as a whole. It's each condition has substantial evidence to justify that condition. Each mitigation measure has substantial evidence to justify that mitigation. The EIR certification has substantial evidence to support certifying it. Each component of the project, not just the project as a whole, has substantial evidence to support its need. If you're basing a condition on something that has no evidence in the record, it's going to be overturned. Which not the same in legislative, it's just deference to the legislators.
So really, is there no ex parte disclosure requirement or guidelines to be wary of when we are dealing with an ordinance?
I wouldn't say no altogether because the McKinleyville Town Project also had some weird aspects to it.
Right.
Because there were specific projects already sort of contemplated within
Right.
the project as a legislative.
That one was kind of gray, a little bit gray area.
Yeah, so I don't, as a lawyer, we never give hard and fast rules. That's not our job.
Honest answer right there.
So the first thing they teach you in law school is it depends. So best practice is always to disclose.
Yeah, I mean, what, I mean, I think we've heard that from you and others is like, when in doubt, just disclose it. Like even if it's a legislative project, if you happen to be, you know, at the farmer's market this last weekend and stood around a table full of people that were talking about this issue, you know, you probably should say that. I mean, I don't know that you need to have like names or exact numbers, but, but saying, I was exposed to a whole bunch of people talking about this and they generally felt this way. I mean, is that what we should do in that situation?
Yeah, I think that's totally fine. I think that's a proper use of an ex parte. If you're exposed to one side or another, that's not a problem. But what is a problem is if you make yourself more accessible to one side than the other.
Right.
And so if you foreclose people who are speaking against a project because you don't want to hear it, that's, that's an issue. Or if you give the applicant your phone number personally, but you don't want to talk to the public or that's why, you know, I think many of you have formed your own like planning commission emails separately from your personal emails in some capacity. Also, all of those are discoverable, so. We encourage it just because we don't know the situation specifically enough to give guidance. In most situations, they're very context dependent.
Okay, thanks.
Just another question, because oftentimes, in particular when it relates to ordinances, but everybody on the commission kind of comes with a certain background and, and their own expertise in certain areas. And we tend to rely on one another in those different areas of expertise. With respect to an ordinance, maybe that's okay. With respect to particular projects, again, you know, if it's transportation related, I might, you know, rely on supervisor's or Curiosity's expertise. If it's cannabis related, it might, you know, Mr. Muldars or, or forestry or something, is that?
That's okay. So, um, like I said, in SEQA, they have very clear defined rules, but it also applies to other things. When we look for substantial evidence, having expertise is one. So that's why some commentators, you'll see say their whole name and title because they're trying to give credentials
Right.
to their comments. I am so-and-so, I have a fishery background, I worked 30 years. They're trying to establish themselves as an expert because that gives more evidence. You guys each have your expertise, that's why you guys were selected to be on the commission because we have a diverse range of expertise. And it's okay to rely on that knowledge. Now, if you have something very specific, like, can you tell me about hydrogen buses? And, you know, everyone's going to look at Commissioner Curiosity and be like, tell us about hydrogen buses.
Right.
And he has something he wants to say, but he has a piece of paper that he'd want to present to you. That should still go on the record.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Good, good. Thank you. One more item, I think, report from planner.
Thank you, Chair. This will be fairly quick because we gave you a written report on this to read anyway. And as you saw, that we've received 270 total applications so far for short-term rentals. That is quite different than what we expected when we were originally working on the ordinance. And we're seeing that there were probably six to 700 short-term rentals in the county. Whether that means that there's still a bunch of illegal short-term rentals out there or the market has cooled. Maybe a combination of both. Recently, the coastal area did open up due to the coastal commission's, I guess, non-action on the ordinance. And so we're starting to see a lot of people approach us about applying for short-term rentals within the coastal zone. You'll see that there were, the 270 applications received, we've approved 184. 24 of those were farm stays, which is kind of encouraging because that was something that was new and we really wanted to try to encourage. 37 of the applications are still under review. One of the things that I want to say carefully is that a lot of people who are doing short-term rentals aren't experts in filing applications. So while we made the application fee extremely low, we're probably losing about $500 or more on every application that comes in. Because we spend a lot of time coaching people. Some of them have required special permits. 42 still have issues that are yet to be worked out. And you can see there that we received $32,900 in revenue from this. But the comment there is that each requires an average of 12 hours of staff time. So my $500 was way low because 12 hours times about 150 is a whole lot of money when we take in $199. So lesson learned on that. In terms of trying to make things really easy and not making it more important for the applicant to really share that, that burden. Happy to answer any questions.
When you talk about the properties that have issues that you're trying to work out, is there anything that comes to mind that like for, like, you're like, gosh, I wish I had included that or like might like warrant future consideration for changes to simplify the process? Are there reoccurring problems that like may be considered in the future for changes to be?
Well, one of the big things we're confronting right now in the coastal zone is that we required a conditional use permit for a short-term rental within the tsunami run-up zone. And so is an application that costs $6,700 just to come in over the counter, is that commensurate with what the concerns are with being in the tsunami run-up zone? And could we have developed performance criteria for the good neighbor policy or the rental agreement that would address the safety issues there? And one of the safety issues that needs to be addressed, certainly within particularly the small peninsula, is that you're not going to get off the peninsula if the tsunami's coming. You just got to go to high ground. And so where is that? That's probably going to be a sand dune. And so if you're a person that has some kind of physical disability, you may not want to stay there. And just starting to think about how to make that information known. And we're, we're currently struggling with that. So that's probably the, the, that's, that's the issue du jour, frankly.
That's helpful. I was just, I think I, as like, we deliberated a long time and spent a long time on it and I'm always curious in hindsight, what, like, we inevitably like as a full team missed and didn't like.
Well, you, you didn't really miss things. I, I think that was an effort to be cautious, appropriately cautious, given how catastrophic a tsunami would be. The other thing that has been a bit of a struggle is the category of road. And this is a struggle with every application we do in Humboldt County is, is there adequate access? And so we've identified a category three road and, you know, people want to argue, especially if they're opposed to it, that it's really not a category three road or it wasn't developed to the full width of a category three road all the way through or the, you know, the cross section of the road of the pavement section isn't what it should be in the Caltrans manual. And we have spent too much time on, on conversations like that. But I don't know that there's a good way around that. Because we, we tried to make sure that if there's going to be people staying in these places, that there's good two-way traffic to get in and out.
Go ahead.
So I guess for me, this is the money part on it. I know lots of other industries and applications, they have to pay staff time. But is it due to the price that was set in the ordinance that the staff time isn't recovered?
We didn't make this a recoverable cost, we made it a fee. And that's because that was something that, you know, when we were going through the review process, that people were really concerned about it getting too expensive. And I said, okay, we'll just make it a fee, we'll charge an hour's staff time.
I do remember that now.
And I thought that that would be more than enough and I was very, very wrong.
Could we take a couple of examples of good applications to build a template that we can hand to people to say, do it like this?
May not be a bad idea to just, just write a permit.
Correct.
Here. Sign your name.
Pretty much. It's kind of what I was suggesting. I don't know. I mean, yeah. Yeah. And then back to the tsunami zone. I, I guess I kind of get it, but at the same time, it's like, how far do you have to go to, like, the sign says that it's a tsunami zone when you drive out there, okay? People with disabilities or mobility issues probably still drive out there and don't know what to do if there was a tsunami, other than they just drove into a tsunami zone. So I don't know at what point, right, do we have to do all of that? If somebody's renting a place, I suppose there's a little bit more due to, you know, a little bit more they need to know than if they're just driving out for a visit. But
Yeah.
we're pushing a little too far on that.
Right. And I, I think we can, we may be coming back to you with, with a proposal to roll that back a little bit. I think part of the struggle is though, in, at least in my mind, is when you're attracting people from out of the area. The people who live there and want to go there, they know the risk. If you're coming over from Nevada or the Midwest or something like that, tsunami? What, what's that?
Yep.
And that, like, you don't, unless you're familiar with the topography of the area, you don't realize that the only evacuation areas are sand dunes necessarily. It's a, it's a challenging question.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. If you, and we don't need to debate this now, but if your tsunami warning was less than an hour, but often they're, they're hours of warning time, so people will leave that area.
Yeah, we're not as concerned about like the tsunamis that are generated from Japan
Right.
or the Aleutian Islands. The, the big concern is the tsunami that comes from the convergence of four plates, you know, right out in the ocean and a tsunami that is generated 60 miles offshore and is coming in at over 120 miles an hour.
The liquefaction will get you first. It's like, I'm being kind of funny, but like where, you know, there's, there's a lot of issues with that if we actually have a big earthquake like that, so.
Yeah.
Right, so. Okay.
Just say too, that the Board of Supervisors approved a couple of the ordinances that you've made recommendations on. The density bonus ordinance was just approved this week with, really without comment. I think the, was the reasonable accommodation went through too with, with really out any discussions, so.
The, the wedding venue that the public coordinator talked about was approved by the board, I think, ultimately.
Yeah, that, that was approved by the board. And I think that the board really weighed what the planning commission did in recognizing that, you know, trying to prescribe some boundaries around it was, was really appropriate.
Okay.
Just one more quick question. So we have one more meeting this year. And then you, I remember asking you earlier this year, like, what's coming down the pipeline? And it feels like we've checked a lot of those boxes, which, nice work. But also I'm curious if there's anything else that is coming down the pipeline.
Oh, we're constantly baking, so the next thing coming at you on December 18th is going to be the regional climate. Or no, you've already seen that. That's going to the board on the 16th, sorry.
Yep.
And we didn't check that box, did we?
Yep.
So after that, the, the big thing we're working on is the Humboldt Bay Area Plan. And that'll have sea level rise implications, tsunami implications, harbor and port implications. So that, that will be an interesting discussion as well. That, that's not obviously coming before the end of the year.
Okay, anything else? Any planning commission discussion items?
Two things that I've told the director and I'm not going to say this in a, in a negative way, but congratulations on passing the R cap. But I was a little bit bummed of the process, just do, we are doing a workshop process. And then I was honestly listening to the hearing. hearing, and I was like, "Whoa, they're actually having a hearing, it's not the workshop." So, I didn't physically have it in me to be up here for court, drive back home, and then physically drive up here. I actually fell asleep listening to the meeting, because that's how exhausted I was, but, I may comment on that at a later date and time. And, uh, December's my last meeting, so, have fun.
It is?
Yes, conflicting sports schedule for a baseball season now also is a basketball season, so, I don't feel it appropriate to know I'm leaving in the spring and then know I'd have to miss January and February, so, yeah.
Yeah.
I have to s, write a letter and sign it, but, pretty much, yeah.
So, if December's Thomas's last meeting, and then we have a rotating, um, member that's gonna go off in, for some period of time?
I, I, uh, sent an email, and I will follow up on that, just to see if we can't, um... I, I don't have control over the...
No, I assume you notified your supervisor, and they're working on an appointment or something.
Yes, I, I mean, she's, she's known that in spring I was leaving, so this isn't, like, a huge shock, it just is a couple months sooner than planned.
Okay.
I tried to give professional courtesy. I was taught, like, six months in advance when you see things coming up. Hey, this is probably what's happening.
But it does, it does mean that, um, as a commission, we will have to, like, the board will have to take action twice in order for us, and so we may, no?
You'll have someone for the 15th, I bet money.
Yeah, for the appointment of the at-large, but for, uh, Commissioner Mulder's position, that doesn't need to go before the board.
Oh, okay.
It can get done exclusively by Supervisor Vishnel.
I thought they...
No, you'll just have to, whoever gets appointed will have to get sworn in, but we've done that pretty, pretty quickly to make sure that we have meetings with Gwarms.
Okay. All right, anything else? Meeting adjourned.